First comment, Sarah Garcia. For today's public comment, I will be looking at the District 205 Decision Criteria that was sent by Dr. Moyer in an email to parents on August 4th. One, are infection rates at a level that D205 or relevant public health agencies consider safe unsafe for school to be in person? If the answer is yes, the criteria says move to fully remote learning. And that this would be based on guidance from ISBE, IDPH, and DuPage County Health Department, using data on positivity rates, hospital admissions, and hospital capacity. On August 4th, Edward Elmhurst Hospital sent an email entitled "A Plea to Our Community" from the system CEO of Edward Elmhurst Health. In this email, it is stated that we are experiencing an uptick in the number of patients hospitalized from COVID-19. The plea for residents was to wear a mask, wash hands frequently, and social distance. Our town's positivity rate has been going up steadily, although it was still below 5%. As of August 6th, Elmhurst positivity rate was 39 positives out of 856 tests, which calculates to a 4.5% positivity rate. This is slightly above the state average. In addition to this, Dr. Moyer echoed Edward Elmhurst Health in his August 4th email and also cautioned families against traveling and recommending that families begin staying home as much as possible, no later than that than August 10th, to minimize contact with others for a full 14 days prior to the first day of school. Given all of this, can District 205 answer no to the first question? It seems that the criteria would indicate to move fully remote. Number two, can we staff core content classrooms for students choosing remote and in-person instructions? If the answer is no, the criteria says move to fully remote learning. The criteria also stated that this answer would be known the week of August 3rd using data from families and staff collected on July 31st. Dr. Moyer stated in his August 7th email, "D205 does not have a sufficient number of teachers who are committed to report to work on August 24th, 2020, in order to fully support any form of in-person learning." What communication has the Board of Ed and Dr. Moyer had with the teachers of District 205? While I know that quite a few teachers, about 200 according to the ETC, submitted doctor's notes indicating their conditions put them in high-risk category for COVID-19, has the district actually contacted these teachers? Do we know if all teachers want or need to be remote teaching? Were some of the teachers simply informing the district of their condition so that they can get more appropriate PPE? While I think sending anyone back into the school buildings during a pandemic is wise or safe, what has the district done to ensure that they have an accurate answer to the above question? The district is clearly answering no to the above question according to your own decision criteria. The solution is clear. The district needs to move to fully remote learning. Do we have adequate substitutes and/or other staff to staff classrooms, assuming double the average teacher absentee rate? If the answer is no, the criteria says move to full remote learning. I am a teacher in another district. I have seen firsthand the substitute teacher shortage in Illinois. Many times when I had to be absent from school last year, my class had to be split and sent to other classrooms for supervision for the day. This is obviously less than ideal, but this will be impossible now given the pandemic we are experiencing. I don't know what District 205 does when they cannot fill a substitute position, but I have confidence in saying that this criteria alone cannot be met, which means the district should move to fully remote learning. In addition to this, in Dr. Moyer's email on August 7th, he indicated that more substitutes were needed to help fulfill the open D205 plan. Since obtaining enough staff and substitutes seems to be an issue, I would expect the district to follow their own decision criteria document and move to fully remote. Can we provide adequate spaces for classroom instruction and lunch to allow social distancing? And can we supervise lunch? The answer is no. The criteria says move to a five-hour day without lunch or consider hybrid. I've always questioned why the hybrid model wasn't chosen for K-5 as it was for middle and high school. If in-person instruction is wanted, it is clearly a safer choice than trying to fit every elementary student in D205 into their respective buildings. No amount of social distancing would be possible in that scenario. Given the survey data, however skewed it may be by including the percentage of no response and with the percentage of people who chose in-person, that is not possible. Even Dr. Moyer admits in his email from August 7th, "Based on the number of families selecting in-person instruction in grades K through 5, the district will not be able to provide daily in-person instruction at that level and maintain the requisite six feet of physical distancing recommended by ISBE." I do not understand how the district thought in the first place that they would be able to welcome back all the elementary school students without reducing class size or hiring more teachers to reduce the class sizes. If we focus on lunch, the district has sent out several notices that lunch supervisors are needed. It would appear just from those communications that we cannot properly supervise lunch to ensure students socially distance. From all this evidence, it is clear that the answer to this question is no. Finally, I'm wondering why the district would go through the trouble of creating a decision criteria document and emailing it to the community if they were not planning on following its recommendations?
Barton, can you hold on for a minute? Is the sound coming through?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, we do have confirmation the sound is coming through.
That it is coming through?
Yeah, there was at the beginning of the meeting a hiccup, I guess. The sound was going in and out, but we fixed it and it is live now.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I heard all that for nothing.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. I am asking the district to do what is safe for our students, our teachers, and school staff, and the community at large, start the school year remotely. Thank you. Next comment is from Joanna Spathis. "In times of immense pressure, it is difficult to tap into our wise minds. The more stress we feel, the harder it is to think creatively, to listen, to process new information, to be magnanimous, or to communicate effectively. We have moved beyond the point of pointing figures. In dialectal behavior therapy, this is the time to use our tip skills. These are the skills that don't solve the problem, they just bring us back to the table, bring us back from the edge, stop us from doing more harm. We have wasted valuable time, and we have mischaracterized each other in ways that will damage important relationships and undermine vital advocacy. I'm asking you to pause. Let's take stock of where we are. The overwhelming number of families in our district want their children to return to school. It is a daunting and difficult, possibly impossible task, given the size of our classrooms, to return every student and teacher safely. We need a robust, thoughtful, equitable remote learning plan. It is a daunting and difficult time to prepare for remote learning, especially given the uncertainty of who will go remote, when they will go remote, how they will go remote, et cetera. We are living through a pandemic that we have never experienced before, and we are all allowed to be cautious. There are students and families that really need the support and services of their school. We are missing details because details are nearly impossible to provide. We need to work together, admin, teachers, family, and community. I implore everyone involved to drop all the past gripes, hurt feelings, and mistrust. This is where we are. To truly move forward, it's best we move together. Tonight, please pause in the best interest of your community and start anew. Center the needs of our most vulnerable students and families and teachers. Collaborate with the teachers, family, experts to see how to meet the needs of those students. Once there is trust, there are solutions. Get those kids in class as quickly as you can. Maybe there will be room for more than just one most vulnerable. Maybe we'll lottery kids into other spaces. Maybe we can commit to getting our youngest learners in across school buildings. Maybe we make room for every high school junior to spread out and get in-person learning. Collaborate and commit to make e-learning excellence. Once there is trust, there can be creative problem solving. Really prepare for it, make it a plan that you can promote and be proud of. And this one is important. Collaborate with the community, family, school, parks, city, library, sports, YMCA, coffee shops, gyms, stores, make them all part of the solution. Get us on the same page and keep us there. Station someone to sit in front of Starbucks and remind kids to put their masks on. Ask parents to deny sleepover requests. Draw circles in the parks for movies, dance parties. From the day you ask people to stay home in preparation from school, my family alone has been invited to two birthday parties, a sports practice, and a scouting meeting. Ask for sacrifice. Be specific. Reward kids for walking around in masks or sitting at a distance with coupons for ice cream or whatever. Invite out-of-the-box thinking. This is our opportunity to rethink and reimagine and model the critical thinking we've been talking about for years. We don't need to lock down, but we can make caring for each other our focus. We can heal as a community. We can step up and help as a community. Whatever you do, please make some decisions and pause enough to carry them through in ways that can invigorate and inspire your staff and teachers and students. Please start anew. Thank you for your time." Next comment, Stacy Roberts. "This is complete nonsense, the back and forth. Stick to the plan that the kids are aware of and the families have planned for. E-learning hybrid. Focus on the kids, not your political garbage of who is right. These kids deserve better than this." Next comment, Ann Donahue. "Why is this board refusing to align to the rational decisions made by all of our surrounding districts? Please start the year August 24th fully remote. Then we can move to in-person learning later in the fall with more planning, cooperation, and time. A mid-September start date just seems irrational to me. Hiring a bunch of subs in a rush is irrational too. And the anti-teacher language being used by this board is heartbreaking. Those same teachers are the folks we will need to go above and beyond each day for our kids. Who the heck talks to their employees like that? You should all be ashamed." Next comment, Michelle Sardo. "This has gotten out of hand. I would like to know where and how the board is going to find, hire, and train enough teachers to open in-person learning. You and the ETC have had since May to get a plan in place. Why are teachers needing training to teach remotely? What was happening all summer? It is clear that educating the children of this community has not been the priority. If we have to go remote because teachers won't get in the classroom, I hope the kids can still do the four sports that were deemed space. Enough is going to be taken from this year. Their athletic career should not be." Next comment, Rosie D. Cristofaro. "Hi, my name is Rosie D. Cristofaro. I am 12 years old, and I will be going into 7th grade at Churchville Middle School. For academic purposes, we would benefit so much more if there was in-person learning. From my personal experiences and many others too, e-learning was not effective. I was falling behind day by day. Students need to socialize in order to stay well mentally and physically. Kept away from some other classmates is not good for anyone. Please give us a chance to go back. I know we can wear our masks, and I know we can social distance. I know we can do this." Next comment, Andrew Hamel. "Dear BOE and Dr. Moyer, as the number of COVID-19 infections continue to rise in DuPage, I'm advocating for two things. A commitment to start the academic year with remote learning to best ensure the safety of our students, staff, and families, and two, to start the school year on August 24th, a date that is already one week later than the original start date of the year. The sooner you commit to a remote learning plan, the more time you'll have to plan for this platform. By starting the year as late as September 14th and ending on June 25th, our students who are in AP classes will not have completed their classes in time for May testing, which puts them at a serious disadvantage. Other school districts have made this difficult decision. Naperville 203, River Forest, Arlington Heights, East Aurora, Lyons Township, Elgin, Chicago Public Schools, North Chicago, Oswego, Evanston, South Holland, Homewood-Flossmore Township High School, District 211, Palatine District 15, Schaumburg District 54, and Glenbird South." Next comment, Kim Harrigan. "The students, parents, and teachers of CUSD 205 deserve reasonable, flexible action plans for both short-term and long-term solutions as we all navigate the unknowns of COVID-19. We all agree that no decision is perfect, but we also agree a decision needs to be made. Parents need to be able to plan for childcare and tutoring arrangements. Parents need to know what classroom assignments and hybrid schedules. The superintendent continues to reference 85% of parents want in-person. Why isn't the board surveying parents now? Does the board assume that 85% of parents would have expected that if they chose in-person? It would result in a plan that now has not enough teachers for in-person, a significant delayed start to any form of school, and zero cooperation between the board and the teachers. The superintendent appears to want the board to vote on starting school late on September 14th. Why can't we start remote until September 14th? Instead of taking a strong leadership role in the planning of school during a crisis, this board and superintendent has failed the community in tremendous stress and chaos. Our taxpayer dollars deserve better. Before making any decisions, the board needs to re-survey parents based on the board's current lack of any plan and failure to find common ground with the Elmhurst teachers." Next comment, Nicole Santoro. "Speaking on behalf of our son, an incoming York freshman, we would like to change our vote to 824 remote learning instead of 914 hybrid maybe. When we expressed our preference for hybrid learning via the D205 survey that was based on an August start date assumption, September 14th is a game changer for us that frankly we had not anticipated. We sincerely hope you're doing well under the circumstances. We know you're enduring beyond what can be reasonably expected unfairly bearing the brunt of everyone's frustration, which is really a universal frustration overall and shouldn't be directed at you or any one group, parents, teachers, et cetera. Everyone is simply coping at this point, and we sincerely hope by resolving to launch 824 remote e-learning across D205, this will unify most constituents at this time in a positive way, moving forward. We sincerely appreciate your efforts and consideration. Next comment, Laura Weinbrenner. "With numbers and rising risk increasing as students have attempted to join in sports camps without success, it would logically seem appropriate to begin all remote. Almost all surrounding areas in the city of Chicago have switched to remote for safety of both students and staff. I myself, as an educator, do not wish to return to the classroom due to safety concerns. By default, students and staff have naturally been somewhat quarantined and away from one another since mid-March. It is unfathomable to expect students and staff to return without there being cause for concern once they are all back together. I do not wish to have the safety of my own children compromised in any way because the school board and superintendent cannot make the most appropriate decision. It is both unreasonable and inconsiderate of staff and students to expect them to return in groups of classrooms where they are thereby exposed daily to the same children and staff and their families and whoever their families expose themselves to. It is a web effect as far as exposure, as each person leaves school and then exposes themselves to family, friends, et cetera, outside of school. Inadvertently, one person could be potentially exposed to hundreds of people based on this. Finally, since the board and staff don't feel like it's safe to meet in person, I flat-out don't think it's right to expect children to come together in person. I don't think anyone really wants remote, however, at this point in time with so many unknown factors and numbers increasing, and is clearly the best course of action. My vote is for a remote start. With regard to delaying the start of the school year, in my opinion, it is simply delaying inevitable. Very few educators are willing to come back to the classroom at this point due to health and safety, and I sincerely doubt three weeks is going to make that big of an impact on the staff members where they feel safe." Next comment, Jackie Schultz. "I am a parent of a middle school and elementary school student in the district. After reviewing the three options being discussed at the meeting this evening, I believe a fourth option should be under serious consideration. This would consist of a remote start for all, while planning for a return to in-person that incorporates the needs and concerns of all parties as much as possible, IEPs, training, distancing, et cetera. Given the clear need for more space in the elementary school, I opted for full remote in order to support the teachers' efforts to manage the near-impossible logistics should all children return. I have faith that the excellent teachers in our district will deliver high-quality remote instruction, particularly if given the support and faith in their ability to do so. A remote start would also allow for a more timely start to the school year, which I am certain students, faculty, and parents alike would welcome. Thank you for your consideration of this option. I hope the board will take this opportunity to demonstrate its openness to compromise, collaboration, and creative solutions to a complex yet vitally important challenge." Next comment, Maribel Liz. "This was adapted from a Facebook post. The D205 school board and the Elmhurst Teachers Union need better optics on this, but that's partially water under the bridge. It probably isn't true that both sides are equally bad, and I actually think both sides want a high-functioning school district, safe and educated kids, and a structure that aims towards the needs of the family. But watching you both spend weeks sniping at each other on social media is a very, very bad look. Also, I think Elmhurst parents assumed for the most of the summer that both the administrators and teachers were working very hard to come up with flexible lesson plans and class structures that could be adapted to a rapidly changing situation, in-person, remote, hybrid, et cetera. However, what it looks like here, I'm not saying that's what it actually is, but what it looks like is that most people involved spent most of the summer waiting for someone else to do it. Waiting for survey results, waiting on guidance from the government, waiting on professional development classes to be assigned, waiting on class rosters and layouts and schedules, and now we've got a near-catastrophic last-minute scramble and many, many, very angry people. If this is actually a false view and everyone has actually been working hard and smart and creatively to get this done, you've done a terrible job of showing it. Optics, we can do much better. As a final point, the inflexibility of both sides is a bad look. The impression from all recent communications is that the D205 school board was never going to accept anything except the model they pushed with most kids in school, all teachers in school, and a handful of remote learning. And that additional classroom space and staff would magically appear. And the teachers' union has given the strong impression that they are never going to accept anything but full remote. And if working parents lose their jobs or their kids aren't educated, so be it. When two sides have immovable positions, any negotiation is meaningless. We can do better than this. There's no reworking the past, but we can make a fresh start here. I truly believe that everyone wants some version of what's best for the kids and the community. Everybody must be willing to compromise to reach something workable. I don't know what that is, but delaying school start an entire month so that we continue to brawl on social media isn't it. Just to throw this out there as a discussion point, many people are suggesting remote start, teaching done mostly from home while we ramp up planning for in-person and hybrid, then start to pull in more needy groups such as special needs kids, kids of needed educators, and kids of essential workers for in-person hybrid learning, and then ramp up from there, perhaps with a lottery system for people who want to go in-person." Next comment, Vicky Julian. "I voted for hybrid. I want my child in school, but things have changed. We don't have enough teachers to start remote. The only logical answer is to start remote learning and make it the best it can be. Please start school on time." Next comment, Emily Hyde. "After learning the K-5 schedule will be moving to hybrid with a likely to all remote, I am very concerned about the viability of extended remote learning for young kids. With this new remote schedule and guidelines, this leaves an enormously hefty burden on working parents with young children who now need to proctor and guide five hours of daily online learning while holding down their jobs. If we were truly trying to solve the problem of providing the best education for each age group, where is the creativity in the solutions this district has recommended? Class sizes are a big concern that I totally understand for teachers, parents, and kids alike. If older high school-age kids can be expected to remote learn more successfully than kids who don't yet know how to read or tell time, why not spread the K-5 kids into the high school building to make space for in-person learning with reduced class sizes? If we are delaying the school year start until September 14th, a solution to make the best use of district buildings needs to be urgently considered. We should absolutely think critically about how to use existing space and resources to promote the most effective learning environments for K-5 and 6 through high school. Additionally, the same type of considerations should be made for kids of all ages who have IEPs or special needs. Let's put them first here, too. I am not an administrator or an educator, and I understand this idea isn't something easy to pull off. And I admit that I am frustrated by the lack of true creative problem solving shown during this process, but I am committed as a parent to push us all together to do better. If this type of solution would take time or extra money to prepare our schools to serve this way, sign me up, and I will lead the charge to rally parents, many of whom I'm sure would love to pitch in and help. This community needs to come together to ensure kids have better outcomes this year." Next comment, Jeanette Lancelotti. "Please start the school year by August 24th. The kids need routine and to get back to learning. E-learning is better than no learning. Start remote if you have to, and then transition to hybrid after September 14th. Give the teachers whatever they need. Just get the kids back to learning. Even half-day instruction with no lunch is better than nothing." Next comment, Sarah Coleman. "Please put down your differences. The school board and ET aside for the sake of our kids. We all want the same thing, to feel safe and provide our kids with a good learning environment where they can thrive educationally and emotionally socially. We all have different home situations, but the bottom line is the same. The kids need structure and school back in their lives. I am the last person who wanted remote learning. I have adamantly felt that the kids needed to be back in person in some capacity and support the desire to put a hybrid or fully in-person plan in place. My kids are elementary. But it is clear that we are not there yet. Seeing the plans for school to be pushed back to September 14th start date with still no guarantee that we can even staff the hybrid plan is just not acceptable. The possibility of remote learning has been far more of a probability than a possibility to happen at some point, and there should be plans ready to go if we had no choice but to go with this option. It's time for a decision so that everyone can plan and adjust their lives to accommodate it. We cannot continue to string this along. None of this is ideal for any of us, but allow us to help to be a part of the solution, which should not be delaying the start of school year by a full month. It is clear from Friday's letter that the pieces are not yet in place for a hybrid plan, so we need to start the kids on time with a remote plan and continue to work together to get the right setup to move to hybrid when we have the appropriate staffing and logistical needs worked out. With no guarantee that this will happen by September 14th, this is not an acceptable plan, and we need to just make the call to start remote and begin getting plans in place to do so." Next comment, Taylor Peel. "I am reaching out as a very concerned member of this community regarding the reckless and downright stupid choice of the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Leadership and Board of Education to move forward with in-class learning this year or the possibility of a hybrid model. There is no safe way to open schools as COVID-19 continues to ravage our country and communities. You must realize the danger of group gatherings as you have continued to meet via Zoom video calls throughout this pandemic. I guess you and your family are too important to risk catching this virus, right? Why would you even entertain the idea that it is safe for children who are known to be super-spreaders of the virus be put back in classrooms that are already full? Rules and regulations are not going to keep kids from sharing and spreading this virus at school and bringing it home to their families. Are you willing to say the death of any child is worth opening schools? Are you willing to be the reason you bring death to the community? Because each death will be a direct result of your choices now. This is not to mention the personal safety of your teaching staff. They have the right to work in a safe environment, and it is cowardly and childish to blame them for the delay in school opening. They are not your scapegoat for your incompetence and lack of forethought. You and only you are the reason school reopening is delayed. You have had five months to figure this out. You've had five months to see the devastation this virus has caused across the globe, and yet you have done nothing but pass the blame onto the teachers who are rightfully afraid for their lives to return to the classroom. Teachers are not the sacrificial lambs of society or this district and board, and they are doing their best to support their students during this time. A dead teacher is going to be able to teach anyone, and then you really would have staffing problems. Now is the time to reevaluate how we can continue our children's education safely. Just because 85% of parents want their kids back in school doesn't mean you should do it. 85% of parents want a full-time babysitter for their kids. What a stupid deciding factor in all this. If your friend jumps off a cliff, would you do it too? You are the leaders, so start acting like it. Use common sense and move forward with an online curriculum for the safety of our children, our teachers, and our community." Next comment, Chris Ferrardi. "With my experiences with Elmhurst 205 always having manipulated the data to meet their purpose but not telling the true narrative, the data from the survey being manipulated did not surprise me. What is surprising me at this time is the lack of prior planning and the original options to parents being remote or five-days attendance for K-5. Were you banking on more parents going remote? Were you thinking social distancing would not be a concern for the community? I know the building my children attend is already bursting at the seams with my son's reach group meeting in the same room as another group, and there being 24 kids in that room along with four teacher stations, so they had a very small space in the room. Having in-person five days was foolhardy to begin with, so that didn't work. Now to set up the narrative that teachers are the problem is not working in your favor. Please give the board a real decision. Do not push the opening to 914. Allow all teachers to go remote while your administrative staff figures out this problem created by lack of foresight and planning. Bring a plan to the 825 board meeting allowing for an earlier opening to school with 100% remote and gradual entry that mirrors many of the districts in the area, including Naperville, who Elmhurst compares themselves to." Next comment, Pam Hamel. "On Monday, my daughter received her high school schedule along with other York students. If the district were to decide to move forward with remote learning at the beginning of the year, would she retain the same schedule and teachers?" Next comment, Mia Termina. "When will it be safe? Many around the country, teachers and communities alike, are using the hashtag 'only when it's safe' in a declaration of when we can return to school. I have the answer to this question: never. The reason why is because it has never been. Teachers around the country have fearlessly, steadfastly, and passionately persevered through it all. I'm not just talking about snot and poor hand hygiene and vomiting kids in flu season. I'm talking about teachers teaching in makeshift open-air schools during tuberculosis pandemics and teachers clipping little notes to shirts of students when someone had measles or chickenpox in the 70s and 80s. I'm talking about freaking active shooter drills. Teachers, don't sell yourself short. Every time you set foot in a classroom and every year since your first day of student teaching, you have been exposed and vulnerable. Any of a host of pathogens could be brought home on any given day. We have weathered horrible flu seasons and risked being exposed to and potentially bringing home to vulnerable family members not only influenza but MRSA, norovirus, and a host of vaccine-preventable infections, all without masks, all without face shields, all without scrubs, all without virtual learning. You are essential employees." You are essential employees. You are the very fiber of what our communities need. You are our children's heroes. We need you, all of you, not when it's safe. I am an infectious disease specialist. I am the single mother of a Hawthorne first grader with no second parent and no family in the state of Illinois. I am my daughter's only person. I am also an adjunct clinical professor at Midwestern University, heading back to the classroom with my students indoors next week. I believe that in-person education in at least some capacity is not only possible but crucial. It can be done. Was I scared walking into the hospital back in March up against this enemy knowing I had committed my life to a field of infectious and communicable diseases and this one was like no other? Yes. Was I scared sending my daughter into an emergency childcare with ten to fifteen other kids? Yes. Do I still undress at my garage when I get home from work and shower immediately after every single day? Yes. But months have passed, and the fear of the unknown has become the routine and respect for the known and for those of us who have been living and breathing on the front lines. We will all get through this together. These leaps of faith have to come at some point. If not now, when? We know more now than we did in March. We know masks work. We have expanded access to testing and rapid contact tracing and isolation protocols. We know we need to stay home when we are sick. Never before have we taken so many precautions as we hypothesize in-person and hybrid instruction. Ironically, we will likely be returning to some of the safest classrooms we have ever known. Are these kids going to stay seated at all times? Nope. Are they going to keep their masks on every minute of the day? Nope. But we need to do the best we can to help these kids ease back into the classroom where they have a chance to adapt to change and experience the commitment of their teachers to their education in a meaningful way. Adhering to the best practices most of the time will dramatically decrease the chance of transmission of this virus within the classrooms. We cannot wait for Phase Five or a vaccine or less than one percent circulating virus in our communities to return to in-person education. In all probability, these thresholds are more than a year away. It's time for all hands on deck, every physical space within D-205 up for a conversation regarding creative use and a plan to get our kids back into the classrooms. There are signs on the hospital lawns that read "Heroes Work Here." Myself and every employee in every essential service walks in masked up, heads held high, and directly into the fire. When I chose my career, I did so knowing full well there would be risks. You as teachers did the same. I will continue to work passionately, sleeplessly, and at the forefront of my field until we get to the other side of this nightmare. That is my promise. Teachers, get your capes on and tell us what you need, please. These kids need you. Next comment, Colleen Kelty. Thank you all for your time and help during this challenging time. I saw the plans to do a later start and possibly lose spring break and end in late July. I selected hybrid but would prefer remote over the late-start options. Could we start with remote and move to hybrid when ready? Can we shorten Christmas break over spring break? It's long winter. Please do your best, and thank you for all you do. Next comment, Tracy Breen. Thank you, D-205, for satisfying the needs of all Elmhurst families by providing both in-person and remote learning options. The D-205 mission is we make decisions based on what is best for students. Families have carefully made their decisions twice now based on what is in the best interest of our children. Please provide in-person school as planned. The CDC, ISBE, and AAP all state that in-person learning is best for our children, even in the COVID environment, with proper precautions. In-person learning is essential, and eighty-five percent of Elmhurst families have chosen it. My four children, two elementary, middle, and high school, need and want to return to school. E-learning simply does not work for any of them. We have painstakingly considered all the risks, and school is that important to our children. To successfully reopen schools, we need one-hundred percent family commitment to CDC guidelines of masks, distance, washing hands. It works. Families who choose to return must fully commit to this for students and teacher safety. One noteworthy point, however, is that six-foot distance between desks is a goal where possible, not mandatory, when people are seated and masks are on. AAP says three to six feet is sufficient. Since we have a gap between families who want in-person education and teachers willing to return, please let's do one more survey for families and ask if they are willing to go remote. Perhaps some of them will change their minds, especially if some kids are unwilling to distance or wear masks for five to seven hours straight. Commit to teachers to provide them Plexi class barriers, any PPE they want, and any other safety items. Switch to the middle school model to teachers switching classes, not students. It's easy enough to group students by ability level just for this year. Have lunch in classrooms, not gathered in cafeterias. There are several other solutions to make school work. Look to IC Catholic Grade School for their plan. It's a good one. Next comment, Cecilia Freitag. It's time to stop the decisive behavior in communications. It no longer matters what you think the data shows about community preference, and I say this because I chose hybrid option for my kids for fear of them losing classes that they really wanted to take. I also chose hybrid knowing I would have an option to change to remote later. You skew choices in data when you tell parents if they chose remote they are locked in and cannot change. This potentially creates an inaccurate representation of the community's feelings, choices, and then should be considered with caution and understanding of the inherent flaws in the data. It is now time for the board and superintendent to exhibit leadership in a very difficult time. Leadership often means having to make the tough decisions, tough and sometimes unpopular calls for the health and safety of everyone. We need our kids back at school, and if the only way to do that effectively is by starting remote, then we need to do what many other local districts have done and make that same call. The reality is that if you have a significant staffing gap now and can't open the schools with a hybrid remote option by August twenty-fourth, then you most likely will be unable to open the schools by September. Typical time to fill for a teacher position is forty-five days or more. That is forty-five days under normal circumstances with the labor teachers available for recruitment. These are not normal times with teachers looking for jobs in our school. If you have a clear staffing plan that includes typical time to fill for each open role in the district that allows time for recruitment, interview screening, reference and background checks, onboarding, et cetera, then you should be able to see that three more weeks is not going to make a difference. The teachers' union is ready to get back to starting remote and phasing in overtime. This is what other districts have decided to do. If you wait until September to come to this reality, then many of the teachers that would be available to start remote might not be available at all. Next comment, Colleen Sherburne. I feel strongly that the district should only hold distance learning classes this fall. The risk to students, teachers, and their family is just too great. None of the schools that have opened in other parts of the country appear have opened successfully. Next comment, Dan DeCristofaro. My name is Dan DeCristofaro, and I want to start off by saying that my family and I support our students, our teachers, our staff, and our fellow parents in trying to get through this. My wife Bernice and I have been with the school system since preschool for all three of our kids, starting with Madison, where the teachers nicknamed our son the Mayor of Madison, to an early education kindergarten class at Field, to Emerson, Churchville, and now York. When the kids were younger, my wife volunteered every week at Madison or Emerson. She helped with and then co-chaired the Emerson Running Club. She still sees kids to this day that remember her as Mrs. D. When we see teachers in our community, they all ask, "How is Rosie?" or "How is Nick?" or "How is Danny doing?" We met so many friends over the years via sports or in the Emerson parent drop-off line we still know and see today. We used to joke that Bernice recruited more kids to York's Junior Dukes Wrestling Team than I did, and I was one of the coaches. Last week, I posted online that our family felt that the mental health aspects of this pandemic warranted a level of parent choice for hybrid in-person learning. Yes with masks and yes with social distancing, and yes fully knowing that it will never be what it was before this virus. We've seen firsthand what this isolation is doing to our kids, and I know they are not alone. The country, in my opinion, is only starting to see the long-term effects of this isolation on our population. No parent should ever have to make this choice, yet here we are. Like any Facebook post, it has had a lot of mixed reviews. I never thought it would have been picked up or reported on in the Elmhurst Patch, but so many community members were weighing in with a polite exchange that it caught the reporter's attention. It was great to see. What I personally learned from everyone was that our teachers need help. I followed up and posted again the spot online where we as parents can sign up to volunteer, with my wife and I signing up. Things like lunch supervision, pickup lines, library duties, security, sports assistants, or any other type of tasks that myself, not being an educator, may be able to help with until we can get through this and afford our educators some time to get a lunch break or to have more time for lesson planning. I spoke with several parents who did sign up, and my only ask is if we can please work to get more. Even a little bit every week will add up greatly. At the end of the day, who knows how this will all end up? It may be inevitable that we will have hybrid learning for the next year while we wait for a vaccine. It may prove that the hospitals are overwhelmed again and our society may grind to a halt once more. Let's hope not. There is no guarantee a vaccine will work, and there is no guarantee that all of a sudden this virus will go away once we do release the vaccine. Members of the medical community have mixed reviews on how effective it will be and when it may be ready. Where does that leave us? I just know that it feels like the powers that be in our school system are so far apart in their negotiations that the only ones stuck in the middle here are us, parents, and our kids. E-learning in the spring is what all of us parents are remembering as the basis of our opinion. Can you blame us for not wanting a repeat of that? We know that the most vulnerable kids among us are the ones who will be left even further behind by e-learning, no matter how well it improves. Even the best e-learning will never be a full-time substitute to in-person learning for our kids. Again, where does this leave us? There are many in this community that view education as an essential service for our kids, and at the same time, we have staff members, students, and student families that have legitimate health concerns that justify not taking any additional risks and learning from home. The question is, what is our risk tolerance and how do we balance this? Again, where does that leave us? I personally will not sit back and let the fear from this virus defeat us to the point that we can't even try to make a hybrid model work. I say no way. I say let's do what we can to come together to see if we can make this work. We know that there are teachers and staff in the group that would teach in person, just like we know there are teachers and staff in the group that would do very well leading the effort for remote learning. Let's lead by example together as one team. Let's develop the best online classroom experience possible. Let's develop a network of teachers, staff, student teachers, and volunteers that can as best possible mitigate the risks in a hybrid model. Let's work together to try and maintain our sports teams with sufficient staff and volunteers so we can give our kids something to look forward to that isn't a video game. Nothing would make me happier than seeing the York Cross Country Team flooded with students wanting to try a new sport. My wife and I both stand to be a part of this team, and I would ask every parent in this community to see if you can spare a couple hours, something, anything, to show our kids and to show the community and the country that we can do this. Next comment, Judith Beriantos. Please start remote learning on August twenty-fourth and continue to figure out in-person learning. Once details are ironed out, create an in-person hybrid start date. The children need be learning. Next comment, Anna Morgan. Dear Dr. Moyer and members of the Board of Education, I'm writing as a parent of three attending Sandberg and Field Schools and as a fellow educator in an adjacent town. Watching this summer unfold, we have become disappointed in and frankly embarrassed by the school district in which we moved here to be a part of. My own superintendent has heard of the conflict between the Administration Board of Ed with the teachers' union, which has played out in public. When it comes up in conversations, I am ashamed that District 205 is the prime example of one that couldn't figure out an amicable path forward to ensure both students and staff feel secure and supported in their environments. As a teacher myself, I've worked all summer long as part of my district's leadership team, along our remote learning team, to develop a detailed safe plan for our district for both in-person and remote options for our students. We have ironed out so many details, openly communicated ongoing plans to both staff and parents, and have adapted to ongoing concerns brought forward. The district purchased PPE for students and staff, microphones, webcams, et cetera, to support both options. Custodial staff removed additional furniture in classrooms to allow for social distancing. Additional staff were hired to reduce class sizes, and all teachers were provided at least ten hours of paid professional development on remote learning for staff. As much as it was not a normal, relaxing summer, our staff worked hard to develop these plans because we were devoted to keeping our students and staff safe. Staff and administration worked collaboratively and respectfully under the direction of sound leadership to address the challenges in front of us. Collaboration, respect, and leadership are three key things that seem to be missing in District 205 to this point. My hope is that our own children can attend a district in which the adults can work in a collaborative and respectful manner with a one-shared goal to give our students the best education that we can under the circumstances, be an example to them of how functioning society works. I have no doubt that the members of the administration and staff in the district are capable of this. Please be leaders in a time that requires leadership and work respectfully with your staff to do what's best for our children and community in order to start our school year on time. Next comment, Abby Mertz. I think that the best option in going back to school is working our hardest to get kids back into the classroom at least two times a week, but for the time being, pushing back school should not be in the list of options. There is no reason for us to push back the start date of school and adjust every break and final when we can start with a temporary e-learning system while at the same time searching for staffing and teachers to supervise for the hybrid system. Delaying school will do nothing but negatively impact students and their learning. Next comment, Donna Scumachi. Oops, sorry. Hold on one sec. I signed up for my kids for hybrid back in July when it was due. If I knew the teachers weren't one-hundred percent comfortable with the plan, I would not have done that. I was hoping we'd get more details from the board. For example, are we putting kids in small groups to limit interaction with large number of kids? Plans for COVID testing and details on how lunch would work and specifics as to what is happening in the classroom? I want to trust that the school board that they are accommodating teachers and families. Then I saw a memo from the Sumter Attendant suggesting to the school board that the school should start as late as September fourteenth. This is way too late. Information has changed since July, so why can't we change to online learning while figuring things out? Several school districts have changed to online learning as a start while they figure things out. Why can't we do that? The long document, Open D-205, is not specific enough as to how schools will safely manage reopening for teachers and students. Until we have more specifics, please start school with an e-learning plan that works for all grades. Once there is a detailed plan in place, we can go back to school. Next comment, Sarah Dennison. I'm a parent of a kindergartner and third grader at Conrad Fisher. Please listen to the teachers. If they are not ready to come back in the classroom based on the plan you have created, show them the respect they deserve and start school remotely while a better plan is negotiated. The teachers are being blamed for not being ready to report for work, but that is not what's really going on. Many don't want to risk their health or health of their family members, which is completely understandable. Why not blame the families for overwhelmingly choosing remote learning? Or why not just recognize the fact that this is hard for everyone involved and that no single entity is to blame? Then work together with the teachers' union to come up with a plan that the teachers can agree to. That's what good leadership does. Many other districts around Elmhurst have managed to come up with a plan to start school remotely and gradually bring kids back into the buildings. Why can't D-25 do the same? Please do not push the school date back to September fourteenth. I suspect that some parents chose in-person because they knew they would have to switch to remote at any time and wanted to leave their options open. But maybe now that has meant schools get pushed back a month, they would rather just start remotely. Could you send another survey? Each party will have to make some sacrifices to make this work, but in the meantime, please show your teachers respect. They are a huge part of what makes Elmhurst schools great. Next comment, The Quiet Majority. We would like to thank the board for their efforts in continuing to push to return students to the classrooms this fall, which is in line with expert opinions on what is best for the students as well as what the parent community is demanding. We find the online trolling by the ETC of its employer to be shameful and unprofessional. Please tell us one other profession where employees can hold hostage the ability of their employer to provide services to the community it is bound to serve. The current behavior of the ETC and its president will be its legacy, and we hope that the board will hold the ETC accountable for its lack of flexibility, partnership, and solutions-based efforts for the kids they claim to care so much about. There is a quiet majority in this community that doesn't spend its days on social media whining and complaining while not even having children enrolled in this district. We get up every day, do our jobs as directed by our employers, and do what is essential in good times and bad. Teachers need to do the same and get back to the classroom. Next comment, Sarah B. Good evening. I know this hasn't been an easy process, but the blaming of the teachers needs to stop. The Open D-205 plan lacked details and did not give assurances of safety for the students or the teachers. Instead of pushing the start of school back three weeks, why don't we start with e-learning? Then do a rolling start to in-person. Then do a rolling start to in-person. I want my children to be taught by the qualified teachers that we have, not by someone who the district quickly hires. I would hope that the district has come up with a great e-learning plan such you have had since mid-March to work on it. Know it will not be easy for parents, but this isn't easy for anyone. Our students and teachers deserve to be safe and our teachers deserve to be treated with respect. Thank you. Next comment, Jennifer Flessner. We are in strong support of the in-person academic model this year despite the inherent risks. The benefits of attending in-person greatly outweigh the risks for both of my children. Overall, the positive social and mental health aspects are so critical for their ongoing development. I urge the board to stay strong on their commitment and to be creative in their efforts. Thank you. Next comment, Natalie Escamila. If we push back our start date to mid-September, what does the schedule for the school year look like? I fear and have heard that spring holiday breaks may be truncated or even eliminated and I wanted to voice my concern over not giving our children much-needed breaks during their year as they are necessary. Next comment, Doug Borchers. I am strongly opposed to the three options being proposed by the Superintendent to push the start of the school year by several weeks. It is time to make a decision and move forward, kicking the can down the road in hopes that the district can find staffing to negligence to our students and unrealistic. You are not going to find spare teaching staff to make the in-person option work if you don't have them now. Pushing the school year start out for several weeks for that reason just delays the inevitable and puts all the students further behind the curve. Stringing our kids along for this ride, meeting after meeting, is doing them harm. Other school districts have come to grips with this reality. It's time for us to also focus on delivering a substantially better remote experience than when we had the fall. Focus on providing some level of in-person or additional scaffolding for kids on IEPs and 504s. Stop wasting time, energy, and resources on delaying in this decision. Let's all come together and get rowing in the same direction. Our kids need us. Next comment, Catherine Dykes. I urge the District 205 Administration Team and Board of Education to work with the ETC in order to start the school year as quickly as possible. Delaying until September 14th is not an acceptable option. There are no guarantees the vacancies will be able to be filled, let alone with desirable candidates who can seamlessly begin the school year successfully. Is it possible to bring in professional mediators to bridge the gap between the BOE and the ETC? I would also urge you to bring healthcare professionals to the table. If the district's planning committee is acting in accordance with the guidelines from the CDC and DuPage County Health Department, then bring everyone together to come to an agreement that will get the school year started. Lastly, is it possible to shift the elementary hybrid to five half-days? This eliminates the need to supervise students eating lunch at school. This also creates more routine and stability for the students and less time wearing masks. I would also like to suggest surveying our community again considering how much has changed since mid-June. Thank you for your time and effort. Next comment, Sarah Galarza. Dear 205 Board of Education and Administration, the constant changing of plans and the public disrespect of the teachers has made it difficult to trust that the administration truly has the best interest of its students and staff in mind. The community is fed up. We've needed a detailed plan for starting the school year for over a month now. The Open 205 Plan proposed and accepted in July not only lacked details such as school-specific safety measures, but it has been updated and changed several times, leaving families unsure how to properly prepare our children for a successful school year. Due to the pandemic, lack of staffing, and ETC's request for a remote learning, I urge you to start the school year with remote learning for all students rather than delaying the start of school. Pushing back the start of the school year won't resolve the pandemic or ensure filling all vacancies or even meet the demands of the ETC. In-person instruction should always be our goal, but that's not possible at this time. The district should spend extra time filling positions and preparing for in-person learning while allowing our students to begin their school year on time with remote instruction. Next comment, Robichek Shauna. My hope is that to ease the anxiety of our students, families, teachers, and staff, our community, we commit to beginning school remotely and on time. If we do not have our health, we have nothing. Next comment, Kim Heinberg. Cross-country as a cut spur sport will have a negative impact on many students. Cross-country is different than other sports. It reaches a wider group of students. Being part of this team supports growth and development in ways that a classroom cannot. Will York consider a cross-country B-team? Perhaps it's an intramural team. It practices on off-times or different locations or not as frequent. It comes to A-team events. Next comment, Anonymous. Please open the school on August 24th. If you are not ready for hybrid by then or it's not possible due to COVID conditions, you should open remotely on August 24th. Whether or not school starts remote or is pushed back to 9/14 for hybrid, the students will still be home during that extension, so we strongly believe learning should begin on 8/24. There is a high likelihood that District 205 will not be able to open in-person this fall at all. Rather than push back the start date, let's at least begin remotely. When there is a safe in-person hybrid plan in place, those that wish to switch can do so at that time, but at least the school year will start on time. You've had all summer to prepare and this is the time is now. Look at the surrounding communities. They are reacting appropriately and giving families and faculty the information needed to organize and prepare with what little time we have left. Opening remotely on Schedule 8/24 is by far the best way to buy time to come up with a workable hybrid plan should conditions allow. It will also likely avert a teacher's strike. Next comment, Angelina Russo. Dear Board members, I am a parent of two 205-two students. My children would not be who they are today without the hard work of the teachers and staff of this community. As a parent and as a community member, I would like to encourage the board to reconsider its current reopening plan. The plan is not best practice and it fails to center the most at-risk members of our school community, students, staff, and teachers. The city of Minneapolis has adopted an inclusive plan that includes remote learning for all but in-person availability for students at risk. This plan is equitable and allows for social distancing within the buildings as there are far fewer students in person. I have attached a copy of the plan to my email dated August 4th. Additionally, the science is ever-evolving on the spread of COVID. The latest information reflects that young children spread COVID very efficiently, making in-person learning for whoever wants it a dangerous proposition. I have included those findings in my August 4th email. I once again encourage you to rethink the current 205 reopening plan by learning from the work of other districts who are implementing best practices and by incorporating the latest scientific findings to keep our community, students, staff, and teachers safe. Two more. Thank you. Next comment, Sandy Stillner. CNN reports that 97,000 children tested positive for COVID in two weeks as more schools planned to open. The reason we haven't seen these terrifying statistics until now is that schools closed in mid-March when coronavirus cases were on the rise. Now, when coronavirus cases are over twice the amount in March and are on the rise again yet again, why would we even consider sending students, teachers, and staff back to school? A week after North Spalding High School in Georgia reopened, six students and three staff members tested positive and the school was forced to move to remote instruction. If 205 reopens, it's almost guaranteed that kids and students will get sick and/or breathe COVID back to their families. That would be irresponsible. Schools will then be interrupted by quarantines, illness, and worst of all, some inevitable deaths. Stats are proving that to be true. I'm a big advocate of education and love to have the kids back in the classroom, but not to put anyone at risk. As the virus continues to spread, there should have been a couple plans of action in place to choose from depending on the current situation and this should have included a remote start. Even in the hybrid model, how do you plan to keep everyone safe outside the classroom during lunch, recess, and gym when enforcing a mask will be near impossible? There are too many unanswered questions. Let's do this the safest way for all. Start remote and slowly figure out this is the right way. Next comment, Cicely Jones. Now that parents have more information, i.e. there are no teachers for hybrid, can we either collectively switch to remote start and start training teachers for this now or send a final survey to parents with everyone's current preference at this point so you can better gauge where parents really stand? With my children in reach and AP courses, I'm not willing to sacrifice their courses by just choosing remote over hybrid, but you may see many parents would have chosen remote if they'd known hybrid would be such a debacle. It does not appear hybrid is feasible. Let's move on. And just to be clear, there are a total of 104 comments, although there are several duplicates included.
Okay, and again, as we did last time, we will post those publicly in the next day or so. Thank you for reading that. All right, we are getting ready for reports and presentations and then while Chris prepares that, I have been told that the community came in to the end of my statement that I read at the beginning, so I'm just going to read that again if that's all right. So I read this at the beginning, but I understand there were some technical difficulties, so I'm going to read it again. I think it's worthy of our community hearing. The COVID-19 pandemic has given rise to the most extraordinary period in public education of our lifetime. As a board, we must strike a critical balance between health and safety and excellence in education, all while planning with the District 205 Leadership Team for school year 2021. And in the midst of it, we are grieving as a community, feeling the loss of long-held traditions, the loss of personal connections, and the loss of normalcy. Most of all, we move cautiously forward into a school year that will be anything but ordinary for our students, our teachers, and our staff. As leaders, we understand the gravity of the decisions we need to make and that those decisions cannot possibly please everyone or meet every need. There is no script to follow. And as quickly as plans have been created, the continuously changing environment has necessitated new plans be considered and crafted. Stress and anxiety levels are understandably high. So let's please exercise grace and patience to everyone in the District 205 family. Each person has different experiences and personal situations that inform a unique point of view. We move ahead tonight, not as seven individuals, but as proud representatives of this great District 205 school community and together, all of us, we will collectively rise to the occasion regardless of the adversity that surrounds us in this moment. And with that, I would like to begin the business of the meeting and obviously to the community who shared your thoughts, we take those into consideration as well as we consider things tonight. Mr. Welton, it's all yours. Tentative budget FY21 presentation.
Thank you. Tonight, we have the tentative budget. The state of Illinois requires each school district to develop a tentative annual budget and that budget is to be placed on display for a minimum of 30 days. And so the tentative budget will be put on display. It'll be put on our website this week and it will be on display for the 30 days and then the final budget will be approved on September 22nd. In addition, we will publish the notice of the public hearing for the 2020-21 budget on Friday in the newspaper. So and that notice will state that the final, or the budget hearing will take place at 7:00 on September 22nd. So on the screen here, we have the summary of the budget. And we spend the most time on the operating funds and the operating revenues are budgeted at $133,125,050 and the expenditures in the operating funds are $139,000, I'm sorry, So expenditures have exceeded revenues by $6,548,667. We start the year with operating fund balance of $63,404,530 and we end the year with $56,855,863 in fund balance. When you look at the total budget, the total revenues and expenditures are skewed because of the planned bond issue that we will do this year for the capital projects and so the bond revenue will exceed expenditures because we will be spending that money over the next two to three years on construction projects. So the total revenues are $214,686,517 and the total expenditures $191,928,75. So in total, revenues are exceeding expenditures by $22,765,642, but that is skewed due to the planned bond issue. And as you know, the, so can you go to the next? So revenues, you know, we've budgeted property taxes to go up to 2.1%, which, so there's no big impact really in property taxes. Replacement taxes are, can fluctuate with the economy and so there's a big reduction there on replacement taxes. Tuition is a big increase you'll see and that is due to the all-day kindergarten addition this year. Food services is budgeted down quite a bit because of the having less students in the building this year, but we're going to have to adjust a lot of these numbers between now and the final budget. And we are planning a finance committee September 9th to go over the budget in a little more detail in what adjustments we're going to make between the tentative budget and the final budget. So I don't want to spend too much time here, but we planned on budgeting only three quarters from the state in mandated categoricals. The evidence-based funding is flat, but the mandated categoricals due to the economics or the financial situation in the state, we only budgeted three out of four quarterly mandated categorical payments. Then if you can go to the next slide. Salaries are up 7.7%. This has to do with salary increases. In addition, we've had to add teachers for all-day kindergarten is the biggest. And the other thing is, last year in the lunchroom supervision, it was down quite a bit and substitutes because of the being out of school March through June. So then, and then, so on the, this year, we're planning to have, we were budgeting to have more lunchroom supervision, but so some of those numbers could change between as we get a better indication of the plan. So we could be adjusting lunchroom supervision's budget between now and final. So those are just some of the things in I wanted to cover. If you go to the last slide, this is just another view of the fund balance, the beginning fund balance, the revenues and expenditures and the ending, the budgeted ending balance would, expenditures exceeding revenues in the operating funds by $6,548,668. It's really all that I thought I would share with you tonight related to the budget.
All right, questions?
Chris, I think I have two questions. I guess we can start on this page and we'll work backwards. So the $6.5 million deficit or run into the fund balance, is that due to the additional expenses to open school during this COVID? Or did I miss that? I'm sorry, I had to use the restroom.
Yes, we've definitely budgeted several, I mean, lots of different things related to, we purchased a lot of PPE and that's all in the budget. So yes, that definitely contributes to the deficit. So yes, that definitely contributes to the deficit. In addition to adding more staff, and the salary increases are more than the revenue increases that are planned.
And, and is it also, we are providing professional development for remote learning, which I know that, for our staff, which I know we're going to hear about later, but that we pay our staff to go to that training and get those skill sets, and that is also in that number and contributing to that?
Yes, we did budget additional amounts for the, the training in, in the Learning and Teaching Department related to remote, remote learning.
Yeah, I'm glad we're supporting our staff that way. Okay, so then, if you, this same presentation, if you go to page two, the tuition for 2019, 2020, tuition collection, 48%, can you help me understand a little bit about that?
Yes, that is the all-day kindergarten tuition that caused that increase in budget.
No, the decrease the prior year. Why the 48% collected? In other words, not collecting 52.
That has to do with the timing of our fees. Well, let me, let me look further into that, that prior year tuition number for you, and I could give you more information on that at the September 9 Finance Committee.
And I apologize, I didn't see it until...
Right, right. But we did change, and it might not be tuition, but some of the fee lines where in past years at the elementary and middle school, we would send bills for the following year in May. And that didn't happen this year because we were out of school, and those bills went out in July. So that, that changed our revenues, the timing of collecting our revenues because of the, but then, that's likely more to be in the lines for pupil activities and instructional material fees and not tuition fees. Tuition's usually more just student tuition for outplacements and that sort of thing.
So if we can get more of that for the finance, thank you.
Chris Kozinski, do you have?
I did. Can you all hear me?
If you could just talk a little louder, that'd be great.
Okay, sure. So first, Chris, on the, the tuition increase as it relates to all-day kindergarten, we're not currently able to offer all-day kindergarten, is my understanding. So is our plan to refund those monies to our families?
We, we are offering all-day kindergarten.
Okay, so, so that's not going to be subject to, to a hybrid plan? Right, because I, I think our families had in mind there, all-day, five days a week, and I just don't, you know, for obvious reasons, you know, it seems like we're not, we're not able to offer that at the moment. So it would feel appropriate to me that we would refund those families.
If families, if families choose the full-day option, they, they get a full-day option that includes the full, all-day curriculum. So the, the program is still being offered. Even though it, even though it, it may be in a hybrid model for at least some of the year, the, the, the curriculum between all-day and half-day is still different, and the all-day offering is still available for families.
Okay, understood. I mean, I guess I'll take the view that I think remote learning for kindergartens is pretty tough, and if in spirit, we're, we're just not able to offer what folks thought they were signing up for, I believe that they should be refunded. And I'll just leave it at that. Second, Chris, on, would you attribute all of our deficit for the year to spending that we have done for safety and getting ready for remote learning?
Let me provide at the Finance Committee a list of the additional expenses related to remote learning for you. But I, I wouldn't say no. I would say no, the, that there is more to it. The $6.5 million is more than what the additional spending is related to PPE.
Yeah, just lastly, I mean, in terms of, you know, spending on safety and spending on whatever our staff needs to make remote learning effective, I'm all supportive of that. I just feel that those, that spending should be deducted from our fund balance, and I don't expect that I will support higher taxes on our people, because I think they're, they're taking on a greater share of the burden for, for educating their kids, and many families are having to spend to supplement education for their kids, and we are still in a period of, of economic hardship. So while I support the spending, especially on safety, wholeheartedly, I just wanted to mention that for our planning purposes, that I think we have a balance sheet to absorb that in our fund balance, and that would be my preference. Thank you.
Chris Welton, would it be possible for you to give us the, the split, and maybe this is what you were alluding to it, for the Finance Committee of the cost of the safety things and the cost of remote learning? And then we can also see what else is putting us into deficit?
Okay.
Spends, because the, the remote learning to address the needs this year and the safety precautions hopefully are a one-time expense?
Yes.
Other questions? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Chris. All right, moving on to second, Item B, Summer Professional Learning Update and Professional Learning Plan 2020-2021. Ms. Tamaru?
Thanks, Kara. So the purpose of this evening is to recap our summer PL, professional learning and curriculum work, and review the professional learning plan for leader, for leaders and principals this year. As you know, we always make decisions, can you go down, RJ, for me? Thank you. We always make decisions regarding how we can ensure that we are focusing on our belief statements. That's okay. That's usually not a problem for me to talk loud, so let me try this again. As you know, we always make decisions regarding how we can ensure that we are focusing on our belief statements, and that LYNs is the one that we used when we were deciding on what professional learning opportunities we were going to offer for teachers this year, as well as what our professional learning for leaders and for teachers would be for the 2020-21 school year. RJ, can you scroll down for me? So regarding our summer professional learning and curriculum development, you can go down to the next slide. Teachers were provided with asynchronous learning to prepare for our new Mystery Science resource and the implementation of that resource. The SBL teacher guides were updated, the Standards-Based Learning Teacher Guides were updated in science, and a scope and sequence document was developed. ELA Literacy Scope and Sequence was updated to interweave social-emotional lessons into our current curriculum resources. And the Social Studies team finalized units for the teachers who want to begin using the new resources this year. As you know, or maybe I could remind you, they had, the teachers had the option of implementing Mystery Science and Social Studies, or one or the other this year. So the teachers made it very clear that they really wanted to implement the Mystery Science this year, so Social Studies became an option for them. But Dr. Thompson did a great job of pulling those teachers together to make sure that the resources were ready if they did want to implement this year. Dual language is moving up to second grade, so our second-grade teachers finalized their units, and then our kindergarten and first-grade teachers revised their work as needed. Regarding assessments, in math, we worked with our resource provider to, to purchase unit pre-assessments that will allow us to provide in-person or online administration. And in ELA, the teams created common formative assess, assessments to utilize in any teaching environment. So the idea being, how are we taking our current curriculum resources and preparing for an in-person environment, but how are we also preparing our teachers if they have to be in a remote or hybrid environment, which we know is our reality? Thank you. So in 6-8, the majority of our summer work in middle school this year was focused on creating a shared understanding regarding how to unpack a standard and how to write a proficiency scale, or more so, what should be within that proficiency scale? How do we scaffold the learning for our students? Our math and science teachers updated their teacher guides and created a scope and sequence document using NGSS and Amplify Science. And our ELA teams worked on aligning their curriculum resources and assessments with the updated standards. Sixth grade refined their custom collections, which is the main resource that they use, and seventh-grade teachers ensured that they were ready to implement their new resource to start the year. Can you go down for me? So in, in, at the high school, at York High School, the core content teams really focused on finding ways to scaffold instruction for our English language learner, as well as continued their, their work to, to de-level their math courses. They also, you can go down, that, yeah, perfect. They also worked on implementing, getting ready to implement our new blended courses that will launch in the fall, and we wanted to provide, make, to make sure we provided time and resources for those teams to ensure that they were ready to support and teach our students in this new blended environment. Regarding additional summer professional learning, we had the opportunity, due to COVID, which we can't usually say COVID has provided us any good opportunities, but we found ourselves in a situation in the Learning and Teaching Department where we had additional funds left over because we weren't able to use them for other in-person professional learning that we had, had planned. So we provided virtual learning for our teachers to teach in a remote and/or hybrid environment. We were excited to see that over 130 teachers capitalized on this opportunity. I do also want to point out that this is a picture, can you go down, RJ, is the picture in the slideshow? Well, keep going. There we go. This picture is a picture actually of a coaching meeting that I had, it's not that actual professional learning, but I just wanted to give you a picture of what that, that summer virtual learning looked like. It's amazing how, how powerful Zoom or another platform can actually be to provide that professional learning. So our D205 courses, throughout the year, over 77 teachers capitalized on taking our D205 courses, and this summer, over 50 teachers participated in our Remote Learning Redesigned course. And while Dr. Grins is going to talk more about what we did to offer additional courses in August to prepare our teachers for the fall, I want to let you know that over 400 teachers, which is more than half of our teachers, took those courses, and that was an excellent example of how dedicated our teachers are to ensuring excellent learning opportunities regardless of the environment that they're going to have to teach in. And I was very proud of them to see that. Regarding our professional learning for our first team this year, our school improvement process is going to focus on our 100-day plans for each building, and Dr. Moyer and the District Office Team identified three main focus areas, which are the focus, which are a focus on the support and implementation of the PLC process, personalization of learning, and the integration of technology as an accelerator for student learning. Throughout the year, we will focus on these goals during our first-team meetings, and principals will each have an executive coaching opportunity that they will meet with monthly to support them in this work. At the end of the year in April, they will have a science fair where they will have the opportunity to share their successes and their, toward their goals with their peers. You can scroll down for me, RJ. Regarding the professional learning plan for teachers, I do want to remind you that this is our second year of our reading cohort, and they will be finalizing their, their learning this year, and they will graduate with an endorsement in reading, complimentary of District 205. So I think that's a success that we should all be proud of. And an additional, something that, that we're getting out of this that we weren't necessarily anticipating is that in the spring and in the summer, the students are all going to receive peer tutoring services from those students. So many of our students in District 205 will have additional intervention and tutoring support. Can you go down for me, RJ? Regarding our professional learning plan, this is just a screenshot of the, of part of it. The focus this year, much like for our principals, we're trying to provide focus for our teachers so that they can focus their work on ensuring that they are focusing on the four PLC questions, that they know how to unpack a standard, and that they know how to take that standard and use a proficiency scale to scaffold instruction, instruction for students, and then create assessments based off of that and calibrate during, during PLCs. Meaning, bringing student work, talking about how they, they scored it, why they scored it the way that they did, in order to ensure consistency in grading practices, but then also to have conversations about what students know, what students don't know, and what they're going to do when students need additional support, or when they need additional enrichment. You can go down to the last slide for me, please, RJ. So we are really ready for a great year of learning and very excited about it. But before I end this presentation, I do want to take the time to thank the teachers who conducted the learning over the summer. If it wasn't for our dedicated teachers willing to give up time to conduct this work and learning alongside us in the summer, we wouldn't be able to prepare our other teachers for the curriculum guides, the proficiency scales, and the other resources. And additionally, I would like to discuss, the, while I will discuss this more in September, I have to give a shout-out to our coaches, which I know I do regularly, but they spent a significant number of hours this summer working with their building principals, working with myself, working with Dr. Grins, working with the Learning and Teaching Department. They are not 12-month employees, and they, anytime we called, anytime we reached out, they never said no. And if it weren't for them, we would not be ready in the fall for the learning for our teachers that I know we will be. So thanks to our teachers and thanks to our coaches. Do you have any questions for me?
Courtney?
Yeah, not a question, just kind of to echo what you just said, because as I was listening to how many teachers participated in professional desert, professional learning over the summer, especially when it comes to being prepared for remote learning in whatever form or whenever that happens, I really do just want to give a huge shout-out of appreciation to all of those teachers that participated. It's, it's that commitment and that dedication to teaching our kids that will see us through this. And I, I know that we all appreciated a great deal, so I just don't want ever that to go by the wayside. So I appreciate you mentioning that.
Karen?
So Nikki, I know that you showed how you did some of the professional development Zoom and kind of modeled the remote learning piece of it. That's kind of the background of this question, is can, can you give us some examples of how we have been preparing with the tech team, which consists of a lot of teachers as well and everyone throughout the district? The work that they did really kind of has been great background to allow us to shift into what we had to with COVID, right? But now we have the time, and we've had the people throughout the process getting the feedback from all the various surveys, et cetera, that goes into that planning and the execution. So is it possible for you to give us some examples of how the technology and the remote learning elements are components of how we do that professional development, curriculum development, so that it gets to the teachers packaged from the learning and teaching organization, which I know is new?
Right.
For education.
Right, that was exactly what I was going to say. I mean, when the teachers walked away in March, they didn't have, they had to, they walked away without any of their resources. So now...
So now they'll have, they'll have more technology resources at their disposal. One of the things that Megan Hargrave did, which was our, our consultant from the Teachers' College that conducted that training, where you saw the Zoom picture, was she modeled for teachers, she was not in the room with them, and she modeled how to use a variety of different platforms and how to put people into breakout rooms, and how to use the chat function to keep them engaged in, in the, throughout the day. So that was one specific example, and I know Scott, because I don't want to steal any of his thunder, I know he's going to speak to this very directly in his presentation as well. So does that give you one example, Karen?
Sure, it does, and I, all I want to do is kind of point out to our community and, you know, anyone that wants to learn from, you know, what's happening or what has been happening, the beautiful thing about integrating technology into education is that even within, like your curriculum directors, it's, in the past, it was kind of the instruction piece, but now they're responsible for the, the typical preparation of deploying a new curriculum or an adjusted curriculum to the staff. But there's a technology component that also is part of that, that is packaged that goes out to the teachers, so that at least they have some examples of what that is, and then they can always add on things that they know, and we're, you know, we've got the, we've got the, you know, the teachers instructional coaches that, and, and the technology committee that's kind of putting together a, online resource, a pool, a repository of, of different things for different applications and different uses and different instructional techniques.
Right, absolutely. Thank you.
So I just was looking at the slide that you talk about, like the PLC questions and then the, kind of your plan for the year of, or at least, I guess, up till January. And I just, I mean, I have no issue with what we're doing, but I just want to say, I guess, I would, I am sure you're thinking this, but, you know, there's just a lot going on when we re-enter school, and I think that if these plans, you know, need to be altered to reflect what teachers need in that moment, I hope that, you know, you'll do that and the leadership will do that so that the needs that arise will be addressed.
Right. I think we actually got lucky on this one because the teachers have been asking for specific learning on how to differentiate for students, how to personalize learning, and I think by having those clear proficiency scales, having a clear, clear learning on how to unpack a standard, because those standards are very meaty if you've never seen one, and it's a lot, there's a lot to it, so how do you take the nouns and verbs and, and really identify what students need to know and be able to do and scaffold that instruction? I think it's, it's actually going to help teachers when they are in a hybrid or a remote environment to really focus their teaching on the most important skills and strategies. But absolutely, we are perfectly prepared to, to pivot if we need to. I think one example would be, I think we would be short-sighted to say that we aren't going to have to provide additional remote learning, professional learning for teachers, and we will probably have to take some of this time to do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chris Kozinski, did you have anything?
I did, I just, if you go back to the page there with the schedule, one of my observations was just, I just want to make sure that if there are outstanding requests for professional development as it relates to remote learning, that we're doing everything we can to meet those requests from, for, for our teachers. And then I also wanted to ask, is the plan that there will be a help desk of sorts for, for teachers with regards to remote learning, for those who are teaching in a remote setting as well during the school year?
I mean, we'll always have support for our teachers. Our coaches are really a first point person for them. Our, our principals, obviously, and assistant principals are always, we meet with them regularly, and they give us feedback about what teachers need. So absolutely, there will be multiple types of feedback loops that teachers will be able to utilize. I'm sure we're going to be surveying parents and teachers regarding their, how they feel about how the first weeks have gone, so that we can make any midstream adjustments that we need to make to make learning and teaching better for students and for teachers.
Okay.
I want to add, I'd like to add that we've only designated on our calendar three of the allowable five remote learning, professional learning days, and we're anticipating that we will come back and ask for both of those days. We just want to strategically place them at a time where it supports where the teachers are and we can make adjustments based on feedback. We're thinking maybe one in October, one in January right now, but that could, that could change.
Okay, got it. And then lastly, I just wanted to add to what Courtney said and say thank you to the, the hundreds of members of our staff that attended the sessions over the summer on, on remote learning, professional development, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Nikki.
Thanks.
All right, next presentation, Remote Learning Plan 2.0, Dr. Grins.
Good evening, everyone. Let's try that again. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? So my name is Scott Grins, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Innovation and Systems Management. I'm going to be sharing with you some of our new approaches with remote learning this evening. If you could please go to the next slide, thank you. These are the four foundational beliefs from the Open D two oh five Steering Committee, which were also considered throughout the remote learning improvements. This outline is going to have four parts, learnings from the spring, then versus now, and what has changed both at the state level and also at the district level, and then we will be talking about some of the systems that are set up for success, as well as the details of remote learning that I know many are looking forward to hearing more about. I do want to just do a little reflection on both a, a personal and a professional level. I don't know anyone that enjoyed the spring, and I think that when we think about remote learning, it's definitely a contributor to that, regardless of the successes that were there, as well as the challenges, and we, we know we can do better, and we know that we had some great moments as well, but as a parent, I know that it wasn't easy as well. So we are also a learning community, and when we go through struggles like that, we learn a lot from it, and there has been a series of major takeaways that have resulted, and I think structurally, we have a real opportunity to do a great job with it this, this year, and you're going to hear some of that tonight. So some of the feedback from the spring, and I'll only show you a few of these because you have seen this before, but I just wanted to sort of bring it back to the front of some of our, our focus. We did have some successes as it related to technology and communication, and some positive experiences within that. One of the pieces that we are going to focus on now is really personalizing the learning, and we're going to unpack that for you tonight to help you see what that means and how we will be doing that on a day-to-day level. Another element in there you will see is sort of a balance to the workload that the students were experiencing in the spring, both in terms of the quantity, but also the quality, and we have some great examples of how we're going to improve on that as well. We also did an assessment for the staff, if you could, the next slide, please, and this was recent, we sent this out this summer, and we're able to sort of learn a little bit more on the staff's needs and gain their input on what they want the professional development to look like for the summer. When you break it into one section of the survey related to safety, supports, relationships, and social emotional learning, you see some elements around procedural safety and then fostering relationships in the classroom, and that was echoed in the spring as well with our staff wanting to really develop those relationships even more in the remote setting, which is no surprise given the distance that occurs physically and how that can impact the relationships in person. If you go to the next slide. In terms of instruction, assessment, and technology, we have a staff desire for more support around lesson planning, specifically in a five-hour setting, what does it look like with the pacing? And I point that out because I think that reflects exactly what the students acknowledge as well, and we know that students are often very, very perceptive, so we have a real correlation between the students acknowledging that some of the work was either too much, or too frequent, or maybe lacking a little bit of depth, and we have the staff also recognizing that they want to improve on that as well. Next slide, please. So all of this data is designed to really be used, and we're going to apply it to the professional learning, and the coaches are doing a great job looking at that data and taking into consideration with a very, very high level of intentionality. So what has changed, and I think these are some important elements for me to bring to your attention, because there are some real successes to be, to be sort of shined on in this, this example. So in the spring, is be issued out a decree for recommended lengths of what they called sustained detention for max, for, for maximums with, with synchronous and asynchronous learning. So what that meant was, for example, in grades three to five, there was guidance given saying that a student could not have more than two hours of instructional time total for their day. Some people may agree with that, others may not, but that guidance was given by the state, and that guidance drove a lot of our work in the spring. Now, we have a decree for five daily hours of learning regardless of the setting, specifically if in remote, and even more than that is two and a half hours of the five is being recommended as being synchronous, real-time, live. We had none of that in the spring. That is a huge shift and a huge opportunity for us to leverage the technology that the staff has already been working on naturally, just going through a different work environment, but also in the PD that will be coming their way as well. There also was no attendance guidance. We took attendance, and we had really strong attendance in District 205 across the board, but we're still going to continue with that this year and have daily attendance expected and required, and we have some systems in which that will take place. Grading was also a big topic in the spring, in which grades could only raise a student's term grade. Grading now will be more real-time and a reflection of the student's progress in the moment. Here in the district, we realized through some of the staff pre-assessment work that there was a definite varying awareness of resources. We have a few really strong websites that were built by staff, and we had areas of 50 to 60% of the staff that didn't know of it, so it was helpful to show that to them and help them walk through that, hopefully as the professional development continues. Google Meets was used as our platform for interactive web conferencing, and now we have Zoom, and I put an exclamation there because it was requested repeatedly, and we worked through some of the safety items that took place across the nation, which I'm sure you read articles about, and we now have a Zoom account for, for all teachers to utilize. We also had daily teacher availability for an hour and a half. That is going to change. There will be daily teacher availability during the class and also during the hours of the school day, which is a major difference than what was occurring in the spring. There was also a frantic week of March 10th to March 13th, 14th across the nation, in which schools were scrambling to figure out what to do and when to do and how to do it. We were no different. We had one day of professional learning that you remember approving, and that was helpful, and it was the best we could do at the time, but right now, we have upwards of almost 20 sessions built out for the staff to really help make sure that a lot of this data is applied and that it is improved as we move forward. If you could, the next slide? I put that arrow there just to drive home two and a half hours of synchronous learning and remote. Systems for Success. So I'm going to talk a little about PD, the vision for tech integration, and then how we're going to align this all together. We have a focus statement for the PD, and I think it's important to draw your attention to it, because we talk about a few things there, one being the words continuous improvement, and I think that is a key piece to our approach this fall, is continuously improving everything we do, also acknowledging that it's complex and that it's changing on a day-to-day basis. It's changing everywhere on a day-to-day basis, and I think we are managing that and working through that to the best that we can. But teachers are learners, and they learn through the way that they're teaching, and I think if you asked many of them, they would probably say that they're feeling like a first-year teacher again, and with that comes a lot of challenge and a lot of struggle, and we're going to support the staff through that as the, the year progresses. So you heard a little bit about some of the, summer PD. We had the D two oh five university courses. We had 403 staff members sign up, which is roughly $91,000 in reimbursement for their time, and the feedback has been incredibly positive, not only in the form of thanks, but also just in the form of their learning, and they have really, really appreciated that opportunity. We had two colleagues, Deb Seagut and Jen Bartholomew, who volunteered to serve as what we're calling Tech Talk Office Hours, and they are taking and fielding questions from staff and meeting with them at designated times, similar to like a Genius Bar or the Geek Squad at Best Buy, not saying that they're geeks, I think they might take that as a compliment, though, and they are working through a lot of the challenges that staff have on, on a more nuanced level, so that folks feel comfortable bringing some of their challenges forward if they feel like maybe it's a question that they don't want to ask in a public setting or in a Zoom meeting. For the remote learning planning days, we have 15 to 20 sessions that are in, in play, broken into four categories, and you'll see those there. And then one of the key elements that we are building out, which Dr. Moyer has been advocating for as well, is time for the staff to work with their PLCs. We are building out a daily basis in which folks will attend PD, and then they will have time to think, reflect, and apply it to their lesson planning, upwards of almost an hour and a half a day to do that work, to help them not feel inundated by the new learning, but in a way that they can apply it. Just in the recent last few days, we've had almost approximately $200,000 spent on remote learning PD for continuous improvement, includes resources, as well as some of the ongoing learning that I'll show you at the next slide. We do have a couple of pieces in play, and this was actually already in design, based off some of our work in the winter, as well some of our, our challenges in the spring, and what this is, is a fancy way of basically saying, we are trying to train our leaders to really have a focus on technology integration. We are designating specific supports in the form of a framework in a book that I will talk about in a minute, as well as staff in the form of the instructional coaches to work through that. We are looking at data throughout the process, and that's a little different than the spring as well. So we will be progress monitoring how this goes by visiting classrooms virtually through Google Classroom, and also through satisfaction surveys. So rather than doing the one or two, we had an April and a May survey last year, we're looking into more frequent and easy-to-take, non-laborious surveys for the students and for the parents and for the staff to see what they need, and that way we can apply that to some of the professional development along the way. In the end, there's the summative assessment, so we are going to engage some experts to make sure that they come in and give us feedback on how we're doing, whether remote, virtual, in-person, et cetera. The next slide, please. So the framework for a lot of our work will be based on a book called The Distance Learning Playbook. What I like about this is that many of the staff members in the district brought this book forward because they had already ordered it, had already read it, or had already been starting to think about it. So we already had a natural inclination as a district that's forward-thinking to use a real strong resource. It's published July of 2020, so it's completely post-COVID-based. It's being used in other districts as well, and what we're hoping to do with this is really provide ongoing PD, and it's designed in a very teacher-friendly way, just by even the way that the chapters are selected, as well as the way that the lesson planning breakdowns take place. So we're hoping this will be a good tool for us to use throughout the year. We've engaged Corwin to also provide PD related to this throughout the year, which will be, without getting into too many details with you, it'll basically be a train-the-trainer model, in which they will come to us, help us digest and work through some of our challenges using the frameworks from distance learning, and then applying that to our staff in some of the existing systems. Some other things to mention that I think are going to help us as well, we do have a common syllabus template that was engaged in after some of our work from Thrive D two oh five, if you recall, back in the, the winter, and I think that will help with some of the, the calls for consistency before, and will help with the parents and the students as they're going through some of these changes that are natural, just given the, the new COVID settings. We also have a common lesson template that will be coming We also have a common lesson template that will be coming forth, which will be an improvement upon that in the spring. It's a little bit more of an internal mechanism, but that helps us make sure things are consistent and make sure that the students have a similar experience from class to class. We talked a little bit already about the principal AP visits to classrooms. So what that means is that when a teacher is using Google Classroom as their platform, a principal can be shared into that Google Classroom. And just like walking down the hall, they can enter that room as simply as electronically logging into the class. So imagine, you know, a principal sort of appearing in a Zoom meeting, very similar. And I'm sure the students will get a kick out of that as well. Continued focus on our collaboration within the PLCs. That was mentioned as well earlier. And then we have some of the exciting resources to continue utilizing with the IFPs that will be coming up, that will have training related to that. Some of the one-to-one integration that's already taking place. And then we mentioned earlier, finding ways to make sure our staff has access to some of the digital resources that already exist. So, Remote Learning 2.0, what does it look like? I'm going to move pretty quick through some of these and we can go back and sort of digest where you feel you would like to spend a little more time. This was just an added glance at what we're looking at as potential options from the initial draft of opportunities, in-person, hybrid, remote. If you could, the next slide. A visual to help those that may want to see, what does this look like in these different versions between remote and hybrid? Because I know it can get a bit wonky throughout the different comparisons. The big point I want to drive home here is the use of both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Synchronous is our way of referring to real-time, live instruction. Asynchronous is recorded, or if you could think of, a self-guided approach. Next slide. So some of the expectations and some of the elements to expect in remote learning. Things like daily attendance, designated teacher, scheduling that reflects the day, which I'll talk in way more depth here in a minute with some examples to show you. Grading will be more of a return to the past with flexibility, obviously where needed, in case we have family situations or other potential circumstances that a student needs support with. IP, 504, and EL services provided in a remote format. The parents will be engaged with their service providers and case managers at the beginning of the year to make sure that those services are coordinated effectively. Each student will have a district-issued device. We had some real successes with that in the spring, so no pressure, RJ. Parents will be encouraged to provide a distraction-free classroom. It's just some guidance we put there just to help folks out. I know that was a struggle in my own house, but it does make a big difference when you can find it and make it happen. And then we'll talk through the specials in a minute as well and what those could potentially look like. So what does the synchronous and the asynchronous really mean and how does that work? We're going to be relying heavily on Zoom from home for the students to use when they have a scheduled class time. So what it might look like is the teacher may provide directions and they will be required to provide those before the start of the day. We will have that common template. It might involve things like direct instruction, might be whole group. There might be some assessments that takes place. There are opportunities for the continued collaboration with things like breakout rooms. Those are basically a way for us to create cohorts of students within one meeting. The teachers will be trained on that as well, some already have. Relationship and building the SCL piece is going to be a key component that we want to make sure that we support the teachers with and we emphasize. And I think that is going to be really, really where we want to get some strong emphasis forward on. And I think that'll prove to be a big difference from the spring in which our students feel like they really can engage with their staff using Zoom and some of these other mechanisms. Formative feedback will still take place. Summative assessments will still be assigned. We will have grading of student work, as we mentioned. And then a nice key component to emphasize is that classes can be recorded in certain circumstances. And we can also then upload those so that students who are absent may be able to take that course or revisit that class and learn from it asynchronously. Obviously, the students will be continuing to do what they do best, which is participate. The next few slides, if you could, RJ, are going to start to show you some of the schedule comparisons of what that might look like. This was from the parent guide that was issued. And it's intended to just help people see the side-by-side as to what a full day may look like and then what a potential breakdown of approximate minutes could look like remotely. If you could, the next one, please. Same thing, I know a question was brought up earlier about all-day kindergarten and what that may look like. Half-day kindergarten, we are anticipating some variation of the minutes in half. There is already schedules built for that that kind of reflect that as well. And then dual-language programming is also in development to reflect that piece as well. Next one, please. Grades one to five, again, just showing you some of the breakdowns of synchronous and asynchronous. And I will give you a little bit more in-depth on this in a minute with some of the 612 examples that I think will show you what we mean by that. This is an example at K5 of what a remote learning schedule would look like, more on the teacher end, but this would also show you sort of what this experience could be for a student in which they go through the week and they have some of those key components related to ELA, math, science, and social studies. And they're still getting those specials as well, broken out throughout the week. Same thing at 68. So this is where I think is helpful for you to kind of take a look. So what this could be in terms of the remote is a reflection of the schedule that the students would have somewhat in an in-person setting. A little bit of a difference in terms of about five minutes here and there on some of the different content areas. But it's intended to reflect the actual day in school. We did not have that in the spring. And in the spring, it was pretty much all self-guided and asynchronous. So if you think about the difference that that already is creating for a student in terms of, you know, craving structure, maybe not admitting that they need the structure, but they need the structure, and having those routines built out. So if I'm a parent and I have a sixth grader, I know that at math, or math is going to be taking place in between 9:30 and roughly 10:30. And I know that out of that timeframe, about 30 minutes of that time in a minimum should be my student engaging with the teacher or with peers. That's a big difference than what was going on in the spring. And it is the guidance that will be set forth. You'll see the range there of synchronous instruction is anywhere from 30 to 65. Some folks want to have it be the whole class and that might be appropriate. They may have the skills necessary for that from the get-go. And that's okay. And sometimes a full synchronous session may not be what's best. And they may have a better opportunity to break it down. But we are trying to set those minimums and then using the PD to support the staff and then some of the Google Classroom access points, as well as the data collection mechanisms to make sure that we're monitoring it, we're keeping up with it, and we're supporting the staff if they need, you know, help with any of the challenges that may come with those expectations. So you'll see what that looks like then, is a student would finish at about 1:25 for their synchronous sessions. And then it would allow time for them to have asynchronous learning in the afternoon. That could be teacher check-ins. It could be time for their work. It could be time for homework-related items, project completion, potential peer engagement. We wanted to not forget about some of the stressors that our students experienced based on the July 2019 Homework and Stress Surveys and having some of the work of Thrive still in our head and knowing that we have to increase the expectations, but also find that balance. We thought that this was a great way for us to deliver synchronous instruction, not cause a complete lack of engagement for the students, but also then allow, and I think this is the key piece, for this schedule to transfer into a hybrid setting seamlessly. So the thinking being that if a hybrid model is taken in some format or another for a remote student who then transitions into a hybrid setting, the schedule will be the same and they would be able to have that same learning experience that they're used to, rather than having a new schedule come up and then having all of those differences that might take place as a result of that. Wednesdays and 68 would involve intervention opportunities for the students. So that would be scheduled, check-ins, things that are really, really structured, and having those be, you know, parents involved as well with that so that they know when that may be occurring. If you go to the next slide, please. This is similar to the others, but for a 912. If you go to the next one, I'm sorry. Similarly to the 68, and again, the K5 version was similar to this as well. It just was in a different format. What would happen here would be elongated periods in which students would potentially have, and I'll tell you why the sequencing is a little out of sequence in a minute, but they would have these periods on these particular days. So Monday, Thursday, they would have periods four, three, two, one. And then they would have asynchronous in the afternoon. And then on Thursday, and, sorry, Tuesday and Friday, they would have periods five, seven, eight, and six. And I'll explain that order again. With Wednesdays involving periods one to eight meeting in a row for 30 minutes each. So the thinking here and the design with this is it allows some flexibility for morning arrival, which again, going back to some of our thinkings before in terms of having not only, you know, a new arrival system and a new process, but also thinking about things like late start times and having a natural late start time for some students based on their lunch period. The other piece that I think is important to drive home here is again, that synchronous learning. So the range is anywhere from 35 to 70, allowing for those teachers that are seeking live streaming and want more of that or may have a day that is particularly lab-based and they want to show that to the students. But then also other days where that may not be the best fit based on the learning structures that they've built out. Next slide, please. So the hybrid model, these were images that I completely stole from the coaches. So I want to give them trademark credits on that. And what we're trying to do here is really just give you a visual of what a hybrid model would look like, taking a similar structure to that, but breaking up the student groupings alphabetically. So on a Monday, Tuesday, you would have your A group in and your B group at home. And there would be time during that period in which students would live chat with one another, which I will talk about more in-depth here in a minute. Similarly, on Thursday, Friday, which is flip-flopped with a different group of students that are in-person and those that are at home. And then Wednesdays, we have a few options that we'll go through here in a slide that would walk through what the different hybrid models could involve for Wednesdays. So what does this look like for the students? And then what does this look like for the students that are at home? So in-person versus remote. Well, the in-person students would have some sort of a daily opening lesson. This could be pre-recorded, it may be live. They may have the students, the teachers may be collaborating and having different teachers from the same PLC or potentially the same grade level developing those lessons. And the remote students would be engaging with that live, if it was a live session or pre-recorded, based on the directives of the teacher. The students would complete the learning activity, either independently and digitally through some collaboration from home or maybe even in a socially-distanced way if they're in-person. Obviously, we'll be honoring social distance throughout all of these. On the in-person days, there's an opportunity for some of that small-group feedback or in-person feedback. And then when students are remote, we would have to rely on things like chat, Google Classroom, or potentially even email. The key component to this, and I think this is what I want to emphasize the most, is that there would be some form of a daily live discussion. We've received a lot of feedback from this, from teachers and coaches as well, asking, what does that look like? What are we thinking with that? How can that be in different formats? How can we make that effective? And really, the way that it's broken down for you tonight is that live daily discussion would be a live stream of class. It might be a live chat with the teacher or it might be a live chat with the student groups. What we don't want to have happen is we don't want a student that is in the B group to have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday without talking to an adult. We want to have them have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday with some opportunity in some various formats to engage with their teachers or engage with their classmates. We don't want to lose the students. We don't want to lose them through just the natural digital divide that may occur. And we don't want to lose them socially, emotionally. And we think that by having that mechanism in play, it'll allow the necessary balance for the teacher, but also for the students as they really do have a way to connect with their class. Obviously, in the in-person, we want to emphasize again, the relationship building and making sure that that is built out and helping the staff find ways to do that in a socially-distanced format. The next slide, please. So some of the options for Wednesdays. We have option one, and this was shared as well in the parent guide, as well as the original Open D205 plan. This is just condensed. The first option is really just academic and SCL programming. So that might involve a screener for students and then having students come in, potentially anywhere from 25 to, you know, a third of the students who would be in the building for individualized attention, supports, interventions along the way. It also may have opportunities for enrichment as well. So we want to make sure that we're thinking through that in that option as well. The second, option two, would be more of a grade-level focused. So this could be things like helping students with transitions, freshman advisory. And the idea being that these may happen on a quarterly basis to help us, you know, see what we need. But it seems more and more initially here that the leaning is towards option one in which we make sure that our students are supported off the start, especially given any potential learning gaps that occurred between March, April, May, and now. And then the third is a flexible use of time. So opportunities for maybe potentially different creative activities that take place or other ways for us to just be innovative. We didn't want to roll out, you know, some of the brainstorming that might take place with that. At the K5, similar again, experiences in terms of the daily Zoom piece. So, but in a more developmentally appropriate manner. So things like potentially a daily class meeting, maybe happening at the beginning and end, or beginning or end. Whole-class engagement, so finding ways for the A group to interact with the B group and making that fun and engaging so that they have some connectivity in the event of, you know, even a return full person in full class so that we have that classroom structure built. And then a real reliance on the workshop structure. So what that may involve is different components related to mini lessons, some small group work, individual conferring, again, social distancing within that, and then building out opportunities for reflection, whether it be utilizing writing resources or digital writing opportunities for the students in that space. The last piece there is just forthcoming, just additional instructional strategies. So building out the daily schedules again and making sure that we have a real structure for the students and a real routine so that they feel like they are, you know, back in school, both on a A day and a B day. So it doesn't, you know, become a, you know, I have a day off. It's no, you have a day where you're in remote learning. And we want to make sure that there's a structure to support that. So I imagine you have some questions on some of those different slides. I hope I moved quick, but not too quick.
Great, thanks, Scott. Who, I know there's questions, so Beth, do you have questions?
So first of all, Scott, I know you're behind me. Sorry, I'm not looking at you. I love the scheduled routine where they have scheduled class times each day. I agree that that's important for many kids to have that class time laid out and feel like they're really in school without having too much flexibility for when they can participate in those classes. For the Wednesdays at the high school, you talked about checking in 30 minutes for each class. So would that be time for, it would look like their regular class schedule, all eight classes, and they would be time to ask questions or review? Could you just talk a little bit about that, a little bit more about that?
Sure. So what in essence is happening in that model is a switch to what's called a block schedule. And one of the creative opportunities we have with this is to have Wednesdays look different than some of the other days based on the blocks. So the 30-minute piece could be asynchronous, it could be synchronous. It could be check-in, it could be additional skill-based work. It might be a continuation of some of the instruction that's taking place. But we do think there is going to be a need for some more of that intervention. And we think that the Wednesday, by designating it as such, will allow for like a natural checkpoint in which we, you know, sort of force ourselves to do that versus continuing on through the week and forgetting that we need to be supporting, you know, through the work.
Great, thank you. I just had a couple other things. For small groups, I think that it's nice for kids to be able to connect in smaller groups, especially virtually. It can sometimes be overwhelming to have a lot of people on at the same time. So do you envision that kids would be able to do group projects this way so that they can still get that feeling of collaborating with their classmates in a way where it's a little bit easier to communicate in those smaller groups like that?
Yes, absolutely. I think we have a real strong opportunity for that. And I think, you know, having Zoom and having the breakout feature will allow for that as well. and having the breakout feature will allow for that as well, and I think some of this work is going to naturally lend itself to more project-based work, having the students be, you know, frequently in breakouts, and working through sort of a asynchronous piece in which they're working towards a bigger goal on a more elongated week, versus sort of like a choppier day-to-day lesson. I think we're going to see more projects, more opportunities for choice, and hopefully that, you know, allows for increased engagement as well.
Great, thank you. And then lastly, I wanted to say thank you to the teachers that are doing the tech talk office hours, I think that's fantastic, and gives other teachers an opportunity to ask questions along the way, aside from the professional development that you guys are doing. Are there other ways that teachers can touch base when they're having success with a certain piece of technology, or circumstances that are coming up in these, in this new schedule for them, to help out their peers and offer ideas for them?
That, that's a great point. We, we had an idea that was started in, in the spring, in the tech committee, that was referred informally as the Oasis, and the Oasis was a way for us to build sort of a chatroom that the staff could go to, to your point, not only to get help, but also to celebrate and share out things that are working. So I think we, with due diligence, need to dust that off, and really make sure that that gets out to the staff as well. It was at a really good stage in terms of, you know, almost being ready to share, and I think we could definitely revisit that.
Great, I think that would be great. Thank you so much, Scott, for all the information.
Thanks.
Jim?
Thanks. Scott, Beth is right, that was a lot of information. Is this better? Scott, Beth was right, that was a lot of information, and I'm just trying to absorb it. And I'm coming at it from the perspective that I'm used to, as the parent of a high school kid. So, first I want to talk about that green arrow of yours, that, you know, my high school kid was used to five hours of synchronous instruction, and now the Illinois State Board of Education is saying two and a half hours. And I compare that to your proposed high school schedule, and it looks like five periods at 56 minutes a period was 280 minutes, and now you've got four periods of 70 minutes each, and that is, interestingly, 280 minutes. So, for high school, does that synchronous instruction not go down to two and a half hours a day?
So the synchronous range could be anywhere from 35 to 70 in this, this guidance, this model, so it will vary based on, you know, a day-to-day range.
And when it is not synchronous, what's going on? What, what is substituted for synchronous learning?
Sure. So it might be project-based, they might be engaging in an activity, they might be working with a peer, they may be completing an activity and then reporting back into the classroom.
Okay.
It may be synchronous, maybe the whole period, based on the potential class.
All right, so it's somewhat flexible. I'm, you, you said that you were going to talk about why the periods are not in consecutive order, and I think I missed your explanation of that.
Sure. So the thinking there is it'll allow for access to the building in a staggered format, so that if I'm a student and I have a period for lunch, I have an opportunity for a later arrival on that particular day, and the same thing in a period five as well.
Got it.
So it helps us, it helps us maintain the social distancing when we get to that format, and it helps also with building access in a safe manner, in terms of social distancing.
In a purely remote format, what does that day look like?
It would just be that same scheduled block. So if I'm a student and I have period five lunch, I may not be necessarily working in that particular class in that particular time, because I don't have one, but I definitely need to make sure I'm, I'm tuned into my 8:55, period seven.
Okay. And then back to that green arrow, what is that teacher doing for that extra two and a half hours a day when they're not in synchronous instruction?
So they may, they may be synchronous all five hours, based on the, you know, particular teacher, particular week, the model. After the, I think the, the question is also, what are they doing outside of the five hours? And we have designated PLC time, prep time, and planning time built into our collective bargaining agreement, so it allows for, for the continued collaboration outside of those five hours. So there may be five hours of synchronous, it's just the, the minimum will need to be two and a half.
Interesting, okay. And my last question is really just a comment, but your plan to record classes so the kids that miss them can, cannot miss them, can, can watch them at a later time and date and time shift, they're learning a little bit, I think is an absolutely great idea, and will help a lot of students, so thank you for that.
You bet. Thank you.
Margaret?
So, I don't have a question, but I wanted to direct us to, and I, I really appreciate your presentation, it shared a lot of information, and the part that was, that stood out for me was in particular, the then versus now, and just highlighting, because I think there's a lot of anxiety about, they know what they had in April, when it was completely new, and the difference in what that means, and what drove some of those differences. So thank you for highlighting that, in that then versus now, and then further breaking it down to what that day actually looks like. And I am going to agree with Jim, there's a couple of things that we, we naturally got from here, that we had talked about, that we hadn't quite figured out how to do. One, it brought technology much more to the forefront for everyone. Two, we talked about what it might look like for late starts, and this is an opportunity for us, for the high schools in particular, to look at what it might look like for a later start. And then finally, that idea of recording classes that Jim mentioned, for students who miss it, and now they can go back and look at it. So I think there are some, some inherent good parts, if that sounds possible. There's some inherent good parts into this strategy, and thank you for pulling some of those pieces out for us.
Thank you.
Karen?
Sure. First off, I really wanted to thank everyone in the district, and, you know, the teachers and instructional coaches, who really stepped up six-plus years ago. I mean, I, I'm thinking about where we would have been if we wouldn't have put in place the things that we did, and I know that people didn't understand at the moment what we were doing, and even us as a board were nervous, is this the right direction? But if we really didn't put instructional coaches in place, if we really didn't bring technology to the district and do the one-to-one, my goodness, where we would have been. So I really want to say thank you to all the people who trusted that, you know, when you lead in an organization, when you're truly visionary leaders, you know, looking at what we might need, based on what's going on in the world, that you trusted us, you know, to know that these are the right things. And to be honest with you, I wasn't always sure, and we weren't, you don't, you're not always sure, but by golly, you know, it was the right things to do. And we couldn't have done it if we didn't work as a team, and having people throughout all the positions in the district and the community supporting us, and everyone doing what we need to do to truly model what we are in education, which is, you know, to move forward, and, you know, and keep looking at the world, and what might we need to do to incorporate it. To me, that's the big key. And that, that history that we have provides the hope and the, for me, security that we will, we will make it happen, and it will be good. Okay? So sometimes, you know, you see a little bit of the sausage-making. We said that throughout every stage of the, what, six years that we did to prep for the referendum, you know, to talk about the B word, which we never thought we could say, we had to say that, you know, and all, all those sorts of things. But, you know, just I wanted everybody to put it into perspective, that we have gone through some hard stuff and hard decisions, and not everybody saw it at the time, but that's the way it goes. And, and so I thank everyone from every part of this community and district, you know, thank you, and, and we will continue, okay? So, and it's really important from this standpoint, because, because this, we couldn't have put these things together, you know, at this point, if we hadn't gone through those steps as well, and come together as a team, because it takes everybody. So with that, Scott, I think it was really important, one, for you to present to us, but for us to get to the community, not just the parents, but the students and our staff, what is, or how is remote learning different from spring to fall? One was a crisis, the other's planning. And you gave us a really good snapshot around a lot of the, of the uncertainty, therefore creating fear, and now that we have this, the question really is, what, what are the next steps? What's the process, or what has already happened? To ensure that this is going out to our parents, you said the parent handbook, going out to the students, probably Bev's, sorry, communication piece, you know, it's really, but, you know, what are the steps that Bev is kicking in from her communication piece, to help everyone understand what this planning is, because there's a lot in here that, that minimize, not minimizes, that helps with the unknowns, the uncertainty, and it gives us more certainty. And that then alleviates a lot of the anxiety and fear. So I think that's important. I know that it's great, this is a board meeting, it's televised and all that sort of thing, but you got to hear it 11 times, 11 different ways for things to register, and as Margaret and Jim said, this was a lot to digest, but this is the way it's going to be. And so if we can, you know, bite size and continue to communicate to everyone, the more that they hear now, the more comfortable they will stepping through the process for So, you alluded to this, Scott, but I think it's really important for us to communicate that in this planning with everyone, that you are looking at it, or not you, meaning the, the big picture, everybody, you, is looking at it from transitioning from remote to hybrid to full in-person as permitted by the Health Experts Guidance, and, and then, you know, even from the in-person hybrid to remote, if we go into, the, the Health Experts or the state or the nation, you know, puts us back into remote. So I think that that's important for us to also highlight, that we're not in the same situation as spring, where we didn't know, we'd never gone through this, but you hi, you started to articulate, you know, how, you know, can you start to see as we show the day schedule, the difference between remote and the hybrid, what that would look like, and how you can shift from one to the other. I think it's also important, as we work with our staff, to highlight that, because sometimes you, you, there's so much to look at, that's a key component, because that is the uncertainty or the, or the anxiety, which will create the fear of the paralysis sort of potential. So, I'm sorry, I think about it psychologically, and that, you know, just to prepare people. Organizational development, like Margaret's professional background, which I've done in corporate America, so I just, these are the things that we have to make sure are included in the communication, in the training, in what we do. And then, it might be lastly, Kara, sorry, but can you give us a sense of what happens, and I don't know if it's too early yet, but for lab, lab classes that have labs, like the chemistry, biology, physics, off the top of my head, that comes to me, and then the second piece is, I'm calling it the kinetic learning classes, like the Project Leadway, the industrial tech, you know, those sorts of things.
Sure. So we, we have actually received direct teacher feedback and requests to have synchronous opportunities in those courses, because the teachers feel like they have some ways creatively already to deliver it. So in a lab setting, that might be an actual live stream of a potential lab session. We've even looked into ways to potentially get resources to students that may need them, but I think that's where some of our flexibility comes in, in terms of the build-out of synchronous and asynchronous. We, we don't want the synchronous piece to be lost, but we also don't want it to sacrifice the instruction. So, there may be modeling that takes place for the lab, same with PLTW, as recently as today, the company was engaged to see, you know, what sort of resources they can direct us to in terms of schools that are supportive, and they've already been working with, with our Learning and Teaching Director on what that could look like. So the teachers want it, they, they think that there can be some modeling that takes place. There was a typo in an initial board document that had asynchronous listed for some of those electives, and they jumped on it, and they said, hey, we want synchronous, and we want it in there. So, so those changes were made to obviously reflect their already creative thinking on how to deliver it.
Excellent.
It will be a challenge, though, no doubt. I mean, there will be courses that are, are going to be really stretched to be innovative. I think the staff can do it, and I think it's going to be a learning process along the way.
All right, great. And so the other piece that I think would help from a remote standpoint, because it's different, is, I know I read through the hundred-some-page ISB, you know, guidance, and, and I really liked where they had the expectations. So it's the expectations of the district, the school, the classroom, the student, the teacher, the parent, or caregiver. I think that that is good, and like a syllabus, you know, so people know, and all those sorts of things, that you kick off the classes with those sorts of things are even more critical, I think, you know, with the, with the remote, just because it's different, and you make sure that, you know, we have that. I know that that's a little bit in the weeds, but still, I mean, those are the sorts of things that, that set expectations, therefore the uncertainty is less, and therefore then the less worry and anxiety, and so we can focus on the learning and the helping the students in this new environment that we're in, hopefully for not that long, but anyway. The last thing that I really wanted to highlight, because this is really key, and it so easily gets lost when you're in crisis mode. You, as you led this diverse group, representing every part of the organization, you brought in the thought exchange feedback that goes way back, right? So, you know, you went through the remote feedback, the, you know, back to the school, you brought in staff, parent, student feedback, and you're trying to address those all together in this plan, and executing it, and making sure that everybody's aware of it, and is comfortable with it, and is trained with it. But typically, you lose sight of all that feedback, you know what I'm saying, and you're in the moment, and I think that that is something important to highlight, that this is, that's important to us, that it might seem as though it's lost because of whatever's going on in the airways, you know, but, but we're going to stay focused, irregardless of what's happening, we're going to keep, you know, laser-focused on highest-quality education for all of our students, and supporting the, you know, the safety of everyone. So thank you to everyone who's been involved, but I know that you were spearheading it, and you also had your kids home, trying to teach them.
(laughing)
I don't think you did, because you didn't have time, but...
My wife's not here, so I can say I did a great job, so...
Courtney? Just to piggyback off on what Karen left off on, just even reading the public comments tonight, it was kind of breaking my heart, because there was this assumption that nothing was going to be different, and, you know, hearing Nikki about what was going on all summer, and then hearing you talk, I hope our community has a sense, a more sense of calm, knowing that there has been a lot of work being put in by your team and by the teachers, and it's greatly appreciated. So, the one... Um, so the one thi, so, thank you. Okay? So, but the one thing that stuck out for me that I love the most about this is the continuity between whether we're in remote or hybrid, it's going to look the same. And I think that is such a huge stress relief for kids, and therefore for their parents, um, that it is such a positive component to this plan, that I, I really do love it. So I just wanna highlight that and make sure that people understand that every part of this plan is decision-based, not just on the stress and the education of our kids, but also safety. And the, the question that Jim brought out about the four-five lunch shift, just the fact that you're thinking that even on those days that the kids are in school, if we do that lunch period first, we'll have less kids coming in the building at that moment. Everything you've done, um, to this point is to plan for the safety of our students and our staff and our schools, and I hope the community recognizes that.
I do, I do wanna, the lunch thing was not my idea. It was, uh, the York admin, so I wanna make sure that I get credit for that.
Throw out to everybody, like a big shout-out to all the, but I think it's indicative, just what you just said. It's like everybody is contributing to making this a successful plan. And the community should have confidence in it, because it's clear from this presentation that, that it, it will succeed. I mean, there's, there's a, there's such a well-thought-out plan here, so I just wanna give a shout-out. Um, so just a clarification for me, and I know Beth touched on it. Those Wednesdays, either in hybrid or remote, um, there is not a set schedule for the kids. That's that extra day for, um, acceleration for personal, for, you know, kids that need extra help. If you're not a kid that needs extra help, or you're just kind of going through the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday schedule, um, what does that Wednesday look like? Um, you know, I know it's not a set schedule, and I think for the high school, you said, periods one through eight, you're engaged remotely for 30 minutes. Is that a set schedule of engagement?
Yeah, that's a good question. So in the high school, it is a set schedule, and we are looking at ways to make it, um, become more structured. And I, I think that what you're potentially sensing is also what I am also sensing in terms of making sure it's tight and that it is, um, you know, verbalized for the parents, and they know what to expect for that day. So in the high school model, it would be, um, it was really a matter of formatting. I couldn't fit it on the slide, to be totally frank. But there would be period one from 7:40 to 8:10, period two, 8:15 to 8:45. So we would have a structure for those students in terms of their actual remote learning and their remote check-in with those periods. However, it may not be every single student potentially on that day, um, based on the teacher, based on the model. But there would be some expectation of obvious timeframes on those days for those students to learn. Um, and the same thing in the six-eight format. We would wanna make sure that it's structured, so that they actually know when they're supposed to be engaged. I just think the key piece here is making sure that we have those check-ins with our students along the way. What scares me the most is the thinking of having a student not see someone for three days, not engage for three days, and that, I think, can lead to a real cycle that we wanna avoid.
You know, I, I think we couldn't, we all couldn't agree more. I mean, I, and that's really what I wanted to get to. And, and these daily check-ins, you know, with the teachers, it'll let, the daily discussions, um, they are live, right? Or am I, is that an assumption of, am I making an assumption?
When you say live, virtually, remote or in-person?
Well, it's the Wednesday, right? So it would be kind of remote for everybody, am I correct?
Correct, yep.
Would be a synchronous experience, not necessarily a one-on-one. It could be like, hey, you five kids, you know, Zoom me at whatever time, or...
Correct, correct.
And that would go for all classes for each student.
Absolutely.
Middle school, high school, together.
Yeah, and I think it also, you know, when we are there, based on whatever, you know, takes place, there, there is in-person opportunities potentially as things start to take place. And I think that will be really powerful as well for our students. But yes, there would be absolute check-in time with students engaging. I can even see some benefits of doing it with the whole class. You know, we moved quick this week, what questions do you have? Let's take 30 minutes, just see what questions are in the room. Um, you know, hearing none, all right, let's move on. Have a great, you know, two days, we're gonna see you tomorrow for some of you, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that will be a good rhythm for us to get into, to check in with our students and to support them.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks.
Uh, Chris?
Yes, thank you. So first, I, I agree with the statements made, that I think the, the plan you put forth, Scott and, and team who worked on it, it is an improvement over what was experienced last year. Um, so I would like to first thank you for that, but also push you, because I don't believe that that's the correct bar. I think our community expects 100% that our plan would be better than what it was last year. So I think in that sense, it's good that it meets that bar. But I think what we really should be shooting for is getting as close as we can to replacing, i, if we're in a remote setting, replacing what a in-person education would provide for our kids. And I believe that's how we should measure success, not based on degree of improvement versus last year. So I wanted to just make that statement first. Um, second, we, we have not had any questions about grade school kids yet, so I feel obligated to bring that up. And I was hoping you could flip back in your presentation to the remote learning plan for both kindergarten and also first grade through fifth grade. And as you do that, I think my, my concern here is the, the burden on families to usher young children through remote learning. And I would like to understand how the administration thinks about that. I think that there are structural challenges for young kids to learn remotely. Um, even a well-trained, dedicated professional may struggle with doing that. I think of, I think of, uh, my five-year-old son trying to do remote learning, um, as an example. So I would like to, to start with that, just how, how are we gonna meet the needs of young kids, um, in a remote setting?
Sure. So I, I agree with you, I, I have a seven-year-old, and I, I can see some of those, you know, those April moments in my head right now. Um, so what, what I think is a benefit here, to stick with the theme of then versus now, is the structured time. So I struggled as a parent, knowing that there really wasn't a time in the day for a particular lesson. And that led to fluidity, it led to lack of structure, it led to inconsistency, and oftentimes it led to a lack of learning. Um, this model allows for way more structure, um, in which that child knows, and that parent knows, that at that particular day, at a specific time, they need to be engaged in a, a potentially teacher-driven synchronous lesson, or a potentially asynchronous piece that then turns into a synchronous piece. But that daily live piece, following a structure, is hopefully going to alleviate some of what you legitimately bring to light, Chris, is in relation to the frame of 8:15 to 1, um, 1:15 on a daily basis. Um, the reason it doesn't stretch further is we wanna make sure that it's still developmentally appropriate in terms of screen time and, um, students, you know, bandwidth in terms of, you know, maintaining their, their attention to, to an activity or to a potential, you know, just sitting. Um, so we're hoping that this will allow for that. We're also hoping that it'll allow, again, for that transition piece into hybrid, if that's the case. Um, but absolutely, we want that time period to be highly engaging and as parentless as possible. And I think that is an important piece for us to be, uh, using with our satisfaction surveys with the parents, so that we know if that's not the case, that we will need to change things. And we wanna do that, not in December, but we wanna do that in, in August and in September. So we get immediate feedback, and we keep using it and applying it in the PD.
Yeah, and, and Scott, would you mind turning back to the page that outlined an example of synchronous versus asynchronous for young kids? Yeah. So, so when I look at this page, right, and the, the transitions from synchronous to asynchronous, what that looks like to me is a parent getting involved at every step and every transition throughout the day. And in, in a way, that's not the case for a high school child, and probably not the case for a middle school child, but certainly for kindergarten through second grade, maybe through third grade. Um, this, this is going to involve heavy, heavy contribution from parents to guide their kids through. And when I look at the amount of live instruction that these young kids are gonna be receiving, as well as how long the day is, I'm struggling to be convinced that we're not just gonna continue to perpetuate learning deficits relative to where our young kids should have been under this model.
Yeah, hopefully the, the synchronous increase allows for more handoffs, um, to make sure that that is not the case. So the idea being that if I am in math, I have a synchronous piece, and the students are given a little bit of a, um, directive to allow them to work on a potential project or a problem, and then they know the next step. Similar to that would happen in the classroom. Now, obviously, the teacher is not there to, you know, monitor that, so that does bring in some more logistical challenges. But we're hoping the increase in the synchronous time will allow for way more guided instruction where it's needed, and again, less parent involvement. I think your concerns are, are valid, though, and I think that's why we need to be bringing up the, the staff, uh, sorry, the, the parent feedback throughout.
Yeah. Well, and I think it just, it, and we'll get into it later in the meeting, but it, it does feed into my view that, that our schools, especially for young children, are just, they are an essential service for our community. Um, and I, I'm, just would continue to encourage you to look at remote learning plans for young kids differently than you look at it for high school kids. I know that you're trying to do that. And to try to think about, you know, that family with two working parents, and how are they gonna make it work if they have to help their kids get on Zoom calls every 20 minutes all day? Right? And I think that's, that's very challenging for them, and, and I sympathize with that. So, um, in, in particular, my concern is younger kids that not, not necessarily the, the children that are the high end of our learning spectrum, but those at the middle and the low end, where they need our district, right? They need us at a critical time. I wanna make sure we're reaching them and doing everything we can to reach them. And I think doing it remotely, we're gonna have to really, really zero in on that for these kids. Um, lastly, I just wanted to, to state a, an opinion, um, that if we are in a remote setting, which in my opinion would be when, uh, our local health professionals indicate that we need to be in a remote setting, because safety is our first priority. Um, I feel strongly that our educators should be in our classrooms and in our buildings, so that they can fully leverage all of our technologies that we've invested in over the years to bring the best service possible to our kids and make remote learning as successful as it possibly can be. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, so thanks, Scott, I just have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is kind of building off what Chris said in regards to flexibility and engagement. So for families where a student needs a lot of support, which really could be any level or, um, any age, uh, is there flexibility being built into this? Understanding that even if parents are working from home, they may not be able to, you know, help the child at that 30-minute increment? Um, or they may have to support the child when they get home from work, because they've had to be outside the home all day? And a caregiver who can't maybe help the remote learning will have to, or, you know, that it still falls on the parent. So I guess, you know, Jim had mentioned the recording piece. Um, is that something you see being available, especially for kids who, you know, at the younger ages? So you could do it at a different time if it works, or, um, just what flexibility is built in?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it goes back to in-person instruction, and we would want, we would want a teacher to be flexible with a student in the class in a normal setting. If that student had something going on at home, whether it be a personal item. Um, I think the key difference here is we wanna make sure that we know that, and we build those relationships, which is why a huge part of the PD is focused on the SEL component and building relationships for the staff. So the, the need for us to make sure that we have, um, an awareness of those things, so that it's not a distant misunderstanding that all students are the same, that all students are going through the same things. So the idea here being absolute flexibility where needed, um, but with an increase in, in expectations on some of the, you know, day-to-day pieces to make sure that, you know, to some of Chris's points, that it's still rigorous, but it's also understanding. So if we build relationships and we do that digitally, and we help students and we check in with students on a regular basis, hopefully the flexibility will follow.
Great. And I'm, you know, just for the engagement, I'm really glad you highlighted the piece of checking in with students, because I know I'm very concerned about our students who maybe don't have someone who's able to help them or support them in this. And I'm worried, what, what does that look like for these students? Um, to not potentially engage here at school? So, um, somehow incorporating that as, you know, it's, every kid is checked in on, I guess.
Yeah, and I think, I think it, it will be, it will be similar to what we've done in the year, you know, leveraging things like counselors, social workers, um, and making sure that, you know, they have not just their caseload, but that they're also looking at data along the way and making sure that if we have, you know, major dips academically, that that might be an indication of a potential social or emotional or personal situation taking place. So I think our focus on data will increase, and I think as a result of that, we'll have a, another way to have a barometer on our students, so what they're going through. It will just have to be the case along the way, because it's, we need to get to know them better, and I think the data will be one way to do that.
Awesome. And last thing, um, you know, I love hearing so many people are participating in the, uh, professional development, that's, you know, gonna be ongoing. And I just wondered if you have considered offering parents any professional development? Or, I don't know if it's really called professional development, but just, um, you know, something that, you know, support where parents can, you know, join a Zoom call and ask questions, or, um, get some help at different levels on how they can best support their students? I don't know if that's a possibility, but...
Yeah, absolutely. So the tech committee actually brought up that same. We engaged the tech committee in some of their feedback as well over the summer, and they brought up the idea of having, um, a library of supports on a more technical level. So, you know, how do you help your student turn the mute off or on on Zoom, things like that? Um, we do wanna get that up and running sooner than later. I don't know that it'll be prepared right away, but I do think it's on the radar and it needs to happen. And I think it will be, um, treated with a lot of acceptance from the parents as well.
Awesome. Thank you for that. All right. Oh, yep.
Um, I know that we didn't get into the details of specific, um, groups of students. Uh, and, you know, I do want to highlight that, um, there are, there are situations where it is gonna be difficult, um, for the students for remote learning, and, um, that we're looking at that. I mean, there's special needs students where, you know, this is why it's important for us to really look at how do we, how do we transition into in-person? Um, because there are students of ours, whether they be special needs for specific services, that you can only do in-person, or whether it be, um, the students who don't have that support at home for legitimate reasons. Um, you know, the parents are trying to put a roof over the head, you know? And, and therefore, I do not want to, um, uh, create a situation which can very likely be in remote learning, where the student's achievement gap grows. That's not what we're about. And so I, you know, you know, I think that's important for us to say during this remote learning conversation. And that what's important is for us to, through the guidance of the people who are telling us, you know, the experts during this pandemic, um, you know, but we need to make sure that we provide education to our students in whatever environment they're in. in. That's their future.
All right. Thanks. Okay. Thanks again, Scott.
Thank you all.
Okay. A superintendent's agenda, consent agenda. Does anyone, would any board member like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Item C, please.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So could I have a motion for consent agenda minus item C, please?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items, which includes item A, personal summary, item B, acceptance and posting of FY21 tentative budget, and item D, Power School e-collect software purchase.
I'll second. All right, Jenna, you can call the vote.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven ayes, no nays. Motion passes. All right. Could I have a motion for item C, please?
I move that the Board authorize Dr. Moyer and the administrative team to approve the consolidated district plan for FY 2021.
A second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Collins?
So my question is, I just don't understand the explanation. I infer from the explanation that the Board of Education is required by law every year to approve this district And Mr. Moyer is asking us to delegate that authority to him. And I, I don't understand why. And I'm just looking for a little background on the legislative imperative that we approve a plan that, I, I, just looking for some background here.
Dr. Moyer, do you want?
Yeah.
So the consolidated district plan is required. It's a new requirement as of last year. Every school district has to do it. It used to be done separately and approved by the Board of Education as your Title I district plan and as your IDEA, IDEA, plan. And then last year, they combined it into one plan so that they could sort of braid the funding and make sure that all of your federal grants and federal funds were coming together into one plan. So one of the requirements there, and they include a lot of different things there. One of the requirements there is that it's approved by the Board of Education. And then Dr. Moyer, as the superintendent, has to put in the date that it was approved by the Board of Education and sign off on a whole bunch of other agreements as he typically does with all of our grants for the school district.
So why, I, I don't understand logistically why the superintendent is seeking the Board to delegate that approval authority to him.
So...
I'm not seeking any authority for the Board to relinquish any of its authority. We had somebody write a motion and submit a motion to the Board packet that I must have not proofread. I do appreciate if people want to pull consent items, if they check in advance and perhaps we could have corrected that mistake.
Which part is the mistake, please?
All we're asking is for the Board to approve the consolidated grant. The language of the motion could have been written differently.
You're correct. It was very confusing. What you're saying here is we're approving an application for a grant or a grant?
What you are approving is the consolidated district application, which is required to be approved every single year in order to get the federal grant money.
Is, is that a document that we should review in advance?
The consolidated district application?
Yes.
You have it in your packet?
All right. I'm looking at the, is that, that's the other document that was in the packet under this?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just say something that says e-grant management system printed copy of application. So maybe I... I, I'm like a high school kid. I don't scroll. Okay. All right. That's, I mean, that's simply what I was, what I was asking for. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. You can call the vote.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Since I don't scroll, I'm just going to vote present.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one present. The motion passes. All right. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's communication. And before I turn it over to Dr. Moyer, I just wanted to, it's an update on the Open D 205, which includes a calendar item for us to discuss, which is reflective of the Board wanting the administration, particularly Dr. Moyer, to exhaust all possible options to safely open District 205 in a hybrid environment that reflects the community's values and all the safety guidelines. So I just, this is an additional option that is being brought forth as things have changed and evolved in the last couple of weeks. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Moyer to give an update and explanation.
So due to the fact that we're trying to balance the remote requests for, for faculty with the remote and/or in-person requests from students and families, we believe that the earliest that we would have a chance to be able to ensure that we have proper staffing and supervision in the buildings to support our programs and safety is September 14th. And so if we were to start on September 14th and have a September 14th in-person start at the early childhood and a hybrid start in grades K through 12, pushing back the school year in, in order to accomplish the in-person instruction would push back the end date of the school year. And how far back that end date of the school year gets pushed back depends on how many various different changes people would be willing to make throughout the school year to the calendar. And essentially, you, every time you move the end of the school year up, you condense some other days that are typically off, whether that is a Columbus Day, for example, or shortening up the holiday break, or in, in the last option on there, you see that we actually essentially remove all breaks. And removing all breaks, even removing all breaks the earliest that school would end, assuming that there are no emergency days, is June 11th. So, or excuse me, I take that back. That is assuming that you would use all five of those days. So I take that back. So theoretically, you could get out earlier than that on June 6th, but that is the absolute earliest you could get out essentially taking no breaks. And so, you know, the, the, the pros to doing something like that would simply be that, that we do have some administratively, do have some additional time to schedule for in-person and hybrid learning. But there are a significant number of drawbacks to that. One, and pro, you know, probably most logistically concerning is the fact that it would really wreak havoc on the construction timelines for the buildings and would probably result in having to have a delayed start to the following school year as well. So that, that would happen essentially two years in a row. Also, there's a variety of other things that come into play. We may, may have to move to remote learning at some point or we may not be able to for sure start on the 14th. We may not, and, and so we may have to have some type of a remote start if we don't have, if we for sure don't have the staffing ability for the 14th. So, so there's no guarantees built into this that, that everything will be either hybrid or in-person. And so we can't 100% guarantee that under any circumstances, whether that's because of trends in the positivity rates or other things like that, or the other staffing considerations that we're dealing with. It, it does have a detrimental impact on some of our high school students who may have college application, college applications to get done, deadlines in the fall for that, or the AP testing, which is fairly early in the spring, in, or fairly early in May. That shortens up the number of days of instruction that those students have. It also forces us to take a look at the contracts of our 10-month employees and support staff and what, what types of cost would be associated with adding days to their contracts to ensure that we have enough people to get the school year off the ground and end the school year. So there's a variety of things that come into play with that, that potentially make it problematic. But the advantage is, is that if we really want to do everything possible to have an in-person or hybrid start to the school year, then this is something that you could consider. But as I said, even by considering that, there's no absolute guarantee.
Are there any, do you want to ask them questions or Karen?
Well, well, I guess I'm, sorry if I missed it, but I, I'm just, okay, so the objective here is we have 80% of the parents, students who wanted in-person, but appear that, you know, they would be okay with hybrid. And we have two-thirds of the staff, you know, prepared to execute that. So that's why we're having this discussion, right? And that's why we would look at, what we want to do is, of course, you know, the safety, the guidance by the experts, that sort of thing. But we have two objectives here. One is we have the majority that, you know, there, but we're not 100%. And we're working on being 100% there. But the second objective that we have is we want to ensure that we are prepared and we've kind of gone through the practice of what would it look like remote? Because we may at a drop of a hat be told we have to do that from the guidance of the health experts, the state, et cetera, right? So, I mean, to me, I just want to be, you know, bigger picture, why we're having this discussion. Those are the key objectives that we're trying to still put the pieces of the puzzle together. And, you know, like the end of the remote conversation, we know that, that we have to do the best for the kids, which is in-person for, for, or prioritization, that there are some students of ours that the best education for them is to be in-person and we have a lot of staff that is able to do that. And but what, what we know is we have more interest for it than not. I, I mean, I'm just trying to get a bigger picture of what we're trying, the, you know, the bigger picture puzzle piece of why we would have this discussion. So the point being is that, what, what, Dr. Moyer, were you, were you proposing that we kind of, I don't know what to say, but a rolling, you know, in-person, a phased-in approach, that sort of thing, is kind of what I'm hearing? And it serves several objectives.
We can't, we, we, we will not be able to open up in an in-person or hybrid start on August 24th. So we really have two choices. We open up on August 24th with some different type of approach that allows us to move into the in-person and hybrid model as soon as possible, hopefully on September 14th, or we have to delay the start of the, the, the school year. And if we do that, we still are not going to be able with 100% certainty to guarantee that, that September 14th is a magic date.
But can we begin to phase in students, which is what we should, if we've got parents and staff that are able to do that? And, you know, we just are looking at continuing that process to staff to do that, which is best for those students.
Well, I think that, I, I, you know, I personally would advocate for a remote start to the school year on August 24th with a plan of continuing to allow the buildings that the time that they need to figure out where to put kids. If we have a teacher that has to teach remotely and they're in-person and they need to go perhaps to a larger space and, and do some remote learning at school on a given day for a certain reason, they need to be able to do that and they need to be able to sure, ensure that whether it's a certified or non-certified person, that there's somebody in there supervising them. And so we, you know, we have, a lot of our safety equipment is arriving by the day. It just makes sure that maintenance has, has the appropriate amount of time to install all of these things and that we provide some psychological comfort for people to get used to the routines, to get used to coming back to the buildings. And then, yes, we do have the ability, once we start with a remote start, if that were to happen, to bring students in for specified purposes prior to a full implementation based on need or our ability to do that. So, so there are a lot of things that we could do. It's not an all or nothing. The plan that we approved in July was meant to have flexibility built into it for a reason. And so we believe that that model is the best way to start the school year on August 24th. In fact, we, we believe that that's probably the only way we can start the school year on August 24th. We would do that utilizing the block schedule at York, as Scott explained. So we have lunch periods at the beginning and the end of the days to help with the traffic and managing the logistics of the building. We would also move to a five-hour day that would then eliminate lunch and that would allow for us to minimize risk and, and increase health and safety precautions in the building, as well as meet some other needs about space. I, I indicated some need for some larger spaces. One of the very simple reasons we need some larger spaces is because in order to thin out the classrooms for social distancing purposes, we have to store our stuff somewhere. So, so along with the idea of a remote start would be the idea of a five-hour day. And we would then get that off the ground and move to a situation where we could go to the in-person and hybrid model. And we think that September 14th is possible, but we think that that's the earliest possible date that we could possible date that we could commit to.
Essentially, just to kind of frame the discussion, uh, we have an option to start, push off the start of school for everyone to September 14th in hopes of starting off in a hybrid model. But we also understand the reality of the situation that numbers may not cooperate at that time, but that would be the goal. And, and staffing issue, staffing still has to be addressed. Or the other option is start on August 24th, remote, moving towards a September 14th as a target date for hybrid. Am I, is that a good summary?
That is, that, that is a good summary, correct.
So that's what the, that's what we need to discuss and, uh, you know, decide how we want to move forward.
So, um, thank you for explaining all that. And I appreciate that we're looking at all of the options available because we do have a community that, you know, really would like to have our students in-person as much as we possibly can. I have some concerns over the late start date of September 14th and the challenges that that would create for our students and their families. Starting in March, things kind of went awry because of this pand- pandemic. And, um, we know that this coming school year is going to be different than any other already because of everything that's happening and the way that we're going to have to do that. So I just feel that adding all of these other changes into the school year with the late start, um, later final exams at the high school, um, a possible later start for the following year, shortening up breaks, I just think that, um, those challenges might just be too much more to add into an already, um, different looking school year for our kids. And I also think that our kids and families really need to start getting on a schedule and getting their learnings started. So I like the idea of the remote start on the 24th. And after listening to Scott and how much thought that they put into having that remote schedule phased cleanly into, um, an in-person and hybrid schedule, that gives me the confidence that this won't be too disruptive if we, as we would be able to phase kids into the building and go, uh, move towards a hybrid schedule. So that's just my thoughts on the two different options.
Okay, thanks Beth. Jim?
I had written a long, passionate, uh, discussion, but given that it's 10:29, let me just get to the bottom line. I think it's pure folly to try to start York High School any later than August 24th in whatever format. As Dr. Moyer pointed out, those kids have AP tests to take. We went through great effort to move the start of the school year so they could take their finals before Christmas, so they could actually have a Christmas break and relieve some stress. To push everything back disadvantages our children, uh, especially versus other, I mean, compared to other communities in our area. They're not starting in mid-September. So August 24th, no matter what it takes, whatever format it takes, has my full support. Now, if somebody can convince me that, uh, there is a reason that we should start elementary and middle school on a different date, I'm willing to listen, but I think it makes sense. Let's just open school on August 24th and move forward.
Okay. Somebody else? Courtney? Oh, sorry, were you, oh, yeah. All right. Margaret?
Yes, for a multitude of reasons. I, I too support the August 24th start date, uh, starting remote, the idea about giving structure to our, our students, uh, at all levels, uh, returning some normalcy, uh, starting the learning process, the learning engagement piece, uh, for a multitude of reasons such as those. I believe we need to start, um, on August 24th in our remote, in a remote, um, method.
Thanks, Margaret. Courtney?
Um, so I just want to clarify a couple things. And everything I'm about to ask or, um, kind of clarify, please understand that it's with the assumption that I'm asking these questions if current health guidelines allow it, that we stay in phase for, and the governor is not telling, or the department of health, or, you know, DuPage or Illinois Department of Health says otherwise. I'm assuming that we're going to be at the same health level that we are right now, and that's in the context of this question's being asked. Providing that, I feel like we should have, I certainly do, an expectation if we start remote on the 24th, that we will go hybrid. And with that expectation, I, I'd like to know what the district is going to do to secure the staff that we will need that, that is causing us to make this, have this discussion right now. So what is the, and I'm hoping it's an aggressive plan, to fill the positions that we should anticipate that we will need when we go hybrid on September 14th? I'm just using that date because you used it, Dr. Moyer. So that's my first question.
I can address that then, um, and, and also ask Luke to, uh, feel free to, um, piggyback off of my response. The, uh, HR department is working through the, um, staffing with the building principals right now. And we think that, um, with a little bit more time, that, that we can work with the teachers, um, in various ways as well as, as we're trying to work with the administration. And, and we feel a lot more confident that allowing that process to, to unfold will, um, will get us very close to being able to meet our staffing needs. It will then also, we are working on recruiting substitute teachers and identifying people for supervision positions. So we're actively, uh, people are approaching us, they're, they're asking us, uh, what they can do, uh, what the processes are. And, uh, we're building up, um, some pools of interested people to fill certain positions that we might need for supervision or to expand our subpool. And, um, uh, those are, those are the primary things. Also, I think that, um, giving the principals a little bit more time to plan for some of these complexities will also help us be able to figure out and identify exactly what it is that we do need in order to, uh, be successful when, when we go to more of a full implementation. So with that, Luke, um, I'll allow you to add whatever details you'd like to.
Sure. I just, I also just want to add too that, um, our, our building administrators are working tirelessly. And I'm not sure if anybody in this room, including myself, who was a scheduler for many years, has ever tried to schedule a building under the parameters that we're working in. Especially, I'll use elementary, right, elementary right now as an example. We have students already identified who chose the remote option. So we already know the, how, the numbers of students that we have to service. Based on the medical forms and staff who are requesting remote exemptions, if you take one of those staff members out of the puzzle in a, in a particular building, that leaves a hole, that leaves an opening. And so that impacts the internal staffing in the building when we go to a ro- a remote model, because we have to separate students so we can maintain social distancing. So every time we make one change, it has a domino effect on everything else in that building. Um, so like Dr. Moyer said, we have things in place, but, I mean, I'm not going to sit there and lie to anybody. I cannot guarantee you that we will have all of this figured out. I mean, my goal is to get it done by September 14th, but there's no guarantee though. And people need to understand and keep in mind, this is impacting certain individuals who are employed in our district severely, where just this week alone, there have been some resignations that have come in. So people haven't even thought about that aspect, about individuals resigning positions because they feel that that's what they have to do in this case to meet their own needs or their family's needs. So that's another scheduling piece that we just have to keep in the back of our mind. We obviously don't want to lose any of our staff members because they're very important, but I also want people to understand the complexities because I really don't feel people understand that aspect of how a building has to schedule for all these different scenarios and what we're faced with scheduling under a pandemic and also dealing with this unprecedented amount of individuals who do have some very legitimate health issues and why they're requesting these, these remote assignments, which is also compounding our staffing issue. So we're doing everything in our power and our goal, like Dr. Moyer said, is to try to get, yes, that model by the 14th. We want to have an in-person model. That is all of our goals here. That's what we're working towards every day tirelessly. But I just want everybody to understand too, I just really want to give credit to our building administrators who do feel right now that they're being pulled in many different directions just because there's not certainty right now of which direction we're heading in. So we, I do believe we need to start, we, we have to get kids and have some instruction for our students. And I do believe that starting on the 24th with a, with a remote start is the best route to go with everyone anticipating that we hope to have everything done by the 14th. We might need a little longer depending on staffing issues and concerns and needs that arise, but our goal is to have another plan in place on September 14th.
Yeah, I mean, let me clarify. I don't think anybody here is minimizing the complexity of this situation for everybody. And I, I have personally talked to three principals in the last week and empathize and have done nothing but send love their way for everything they are juggling. I just want to know, are we doing everything we can right now to prepare for the 14th? Or the, whatever the number is, whatever the date is? I mean, I'm not talking, I mean, I've been on several email chains, I'm sure other board members have, of parents submitting paperwork from our community saying, "Just plug me in wherever you need." These are not people looking for jobs. These are people in our community willing to step up and fill in where there's gaps because they, just like us, want their kids back in school. So all I'm asking is if, or all I'm asking us to do is ensure that we're doing everything we can, starting remote, to get, if we start remote, are we doing everything right now to give us the best chance to succeed on the 14th or whatever that date is? And that's all I'm asking and imploring us to do.
Well, if that's all you're asking, then it's very easy for me to guarantee you that everybody is doing everything that they, is humanly possible. Because I don't think there's a single person that actually could be doing more.
But specifically in this kind of area, because, right, because we're going to, if we start remote on the 24th with the goal of going hybrid on the 14th, and we do nothing to kind of be aggressive about increasing this pool of people that can step in for, and I'm not diminishing some of the requests to go remote, there are definitely health concerns among staff. But we will be in the same exact boat that we are in right now. On the 14th, we'll say, "We still don't have enough staff." On the 21st, we'll still not have enough staff, and that's my concern. I'm not saying I don't think going remote right now is the right plan, because I do want the kids back in school, like Beth said, I do want them to have schedule. I do like the idea of giving our principals and building admin time to figure out the kinks, but I just want to make sure that we're not on the 14th go, "Oh, we should have done this." That's all I'm asking.
Well, I can, I can tell you that with your assumption, uh, again, assuming that the health, uh, situation doesn't change for the worse, um, then I, I agree with you. I, I don't want to, I don't want to extend the amount of time that, 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 uh, of the remote learning phase any longer than, than I have to. We, you know, one of the things that we have to do is we can continue to build up our pool, but we cannot strategically assign people until we can get the scheduling puzzle. Then, you know, then when we know exactly what we need and where we need them, it'll be a little bit easier for Luke to proceed. But in the meantime, we are working on, um, we are working on building up, uh, a pool of, of potential people and expanding our, our current pool of people to fill some of these needs.
Okay, thank you. So kind of just...
Excuse me, if I can just piggyback on that really quick. And I 100% appreciate the support that the community would like to provide. At this time though, I think a lot of that support really could only be in the form of voluntarism though. Because we need, but that doesn't help the buildings with students in the certificated aspect. We need certificated teachers to cover the certificated gaps that we have in buildings, providing those services. So I, I, I thank everything that you're saying and the support that the community wants to provide, but right now, our biggest priority is making sure we have to get more certificated staff, um, staff members and individuals who have a college degree or at least, or at least 60 college credit hours. They can apply to ISB for their substitute certificate and short-term certificate, but unfortunately though, we're also at the mercy of ISB and that takes usually weeks. And when I say weeks, it could go beyond 12 weeks for them to get their certificate. So I, so I appreciate that, but we, we, we will look at every aspect of trying to get additional support though.
Okay, so then, I'm trying to, I mean, my expectation, if we go hybrid on the 24th, is that teachers are in the classroom teaching our kids at home. Say again? I'm sorry. Sorry, I said, see? It's like Freudian slip. If we go remote on the 24th, yes, thanks Kara. My expectation would be that the teachers are in the classroom teaching our kids at home remotely, in the classroom where they have the full resources that they need to teach. Is, is, am I assuming that that is happening? Is that a correct assumption?
That is also our expectation.
And is that expectation not just for core subjects and classroom teachers, but for specials? And I heard Scott talk about the Project Lead the Way, they're my favorite group of instructors across the board, sorry all other subjects, but, um, is that the expectation across the board for all, um, and teachers?
Yes, it would be our expectation that we would have teachers reporting to their assigned buildings to, um, work while they're in the remote phase. Any, anytime we were in a remote phase.
And would that eliminate the, um, the, the medical accommodation request? And that would, this would ease up the staffing issue because all of those medical accommodation requests would no longer play into the equation because now that there's no students in class or at the schools, they could now come into the buildings and teach. Is that correct?
I can't speak to that. Um, I'm going to defer to Luke. I would just say that I, I think that it could depend to some extent on what accommodation an actual employee actually needs, but... I would just say that I, I think that it could depend to some extent on what accommodation an actual employee actually needs, but...
Dr. Moyer is absolutely right. It's still, that's why we sent out the second additional, uh, medical form. Because while we do feel that some of that would definitely, um, go away and not be a factor anymore, but, um, some individuals still may need that accommodation of being at home.
And it, and under that same kind of category, you know, we had the medical accommodations request and then we have the employees that are requesting CARES Act relief because their children at home are going, you know, their schools are going remote and therefore they have to be home. I feel a, um, a level of uncomfort- uncomfortableness if a teacher is asking to stay home because their children need to be taught at home, that their level of attention to teaching at home remotely is not going to be committed to our students. So I'm asking if those teachers that have requested CARES Act justifiably because they need to be home for their kids, how are we handling them? I mean, because I don't know that I have a high level of confidence that they are going to be as committed to this remote learning plan as that a teacher sitting in the school building.
Yeah, I, you know, I would say to some extent, I can answer your question, but to some extent, the, the HR people and the legal process has to be honored and, and we have to kind of allow some things to play out. Because I would agree with you that, um, uh, it, it is easy to see how a person's, um, ability to, to perform the essence of their job could be compromised if they are, if they have their own kids at home. So our preference would be that a person would have to make a choice. They would either, uh, come in to do the remote or they would go on the leave that the, the law allows for. The, the thing that would happen, uh, depending on the number of people that would choose to do that is then they would have to be replaced. So then we, then we have to go through that process. And we, you know, so, I mean, again, it's, it's, it's a challenge. But it's, but that's the way it would work. And again, Luke, feel free to...
No, I mean, honestly, there's really not much where I can add to that, right? Because if they're truly on enough FCR A leave, we have to again, now, try to find a replacement for them during that time. And that is again, going to impact our staffing and scheduling.
I just have one more, Kara, sorry. I'm trying to understand, you know, the teachers and the staff have their concerns about coming back to school in a hybrid situation, the health and safety of them and our students. All really valid concerns. I'm trying to understand, um, I hear, like when Scott talks about, like, we, they're thinking so much to the detail, like the kids coming in, you know, changing the lunch hours so different kids, numbers of kids come in at different times. What haven't, what don't they have? What don't the teachers have that make them feel safe about coming back? I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. What more do they need to get them to that point? And maybe it's just the three weeks of slowly, you know, piecemealing it back into position, but what more do they need?
Well, I can, um, ask Chris to, uh, explain everything that we are doing. I don't know that I can answer the question, what more do, uh, do certain people think that they need above and beyond what we're doing. But I can say that, um, you know, that's also part of what the bargaining, that's part, part of the bargaining process. That's currently, um, uh, ongoing, um, so...
You know, that's really fair. You're right. I should have asked it. Can you tell the community all the things that we have put into place to help teachers feel better? Or the safety and health of the environment in the school? Can we go through that so the community understands how much, um, resources have been invested?
Well, there's a reason why the budget you saw today is running a six million dollar deficit when we came into the year and thought that we were going to be, uh, running a balanced budget. And Chris said he would get you a breakdown of those expenses at the next finance committee meeting. But I can tell you that, you know, Todd Schmidt walks the buildings with the principals and they, they take a look at every classroom. The, the signage and the, uh, hand sanitizer and, and, you know, the amount of things, the plexiglass shields. I mean, I, you know, I could go on and on, but I think that Chris knows a lot more of the, uh, specific details about some of those things than I do.
Well, we've purchased lots of hand sanitizer. I mean, gallons, gallon, uh, I, I, I can't tell you how many gallons, but just the, it's eighty percent alcohol. We're going to have wipes, sanitizing wipes in every classroom. We're also going to have the Virex disinfectant spray with, uh, paper towels. And, um, so, so there's various things that'll be in the classroom. So disinfectant spray, wipes and paper towels. We also, we're going to have, we've purchased for a hundred and twenty-four thousand tenths for the elementary schools. We're going to, we have the electrostatic sprayer, sprayers with the disinfectant that will be done every night. Trying to say, oh, we, we have face shields for every staff member. We have masks, we, we have just twenty thousand disposable masks. We have cotton masks from the state. We have isolation gowns that, um, can be used in self-contained classroom. We also have N ninety-five masks. Think, uh, what else, what else can we talk about? Oh, we have the signage, the stickers, the decals. With the app, we're going to have, um, we're going to have a rope with ribbons every six feet for, for outside for the, the, uh, process in the morning, uh, for self-certification.
Courtney, I think that it is important to, um, think through that every time, um, the CDC or the Department of Public Health or the State Board of Education changes a guideline, that creates uncertainty for teachers, for all of us and for everybody else. And while Dr. Moyer and the rest of our team actively digests every bit of information that comes from all of those entities on a regular basis or attempt to, if I'm a teacher, um, or a person who's a little bit removed from that decision-making, I might not be doing that. And so what I'm hearing is just uncertainty. And so we have to respect that. And so what we are trying to do is, um, with all that Chris just talked about is every time there is sort of a question, uh, that comes up, even while you all were in closed session, we went and walked the building. What, what was the, what were the questions that came up? How can we address those questions? What does that really look like? What are we going to do to, um, help, uh, teachers to feel safe? And if I am the, I'm not a parent, but I'm an uncle. And if I'm an uncle, how am I going to know that my nephews are safe in a school? And so really, what does that look like when we bring kids back and when we bring our teachers back? So, um, it's all of those things together and piece by piece, sharing that with the teachers and with our parents and with our families.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the purpose of me asking the question was to let the community hear that.
Yep.
Because I really do feel, and you hear the public comments, you know, kind of like what I said to Scott, like the community doesn't know all the work you've been doing. And so when you tell them, look at, look at all we've been doing. And that's the communication piece that we have to keep letting them know because I think that will calm their anxiety. So I appreciate all of that explanation.
We also have clear masks. I wanted to bring that up. There were, there was some desire for clear masks in order for the, be able to see the mouth, uh, for, for some teachers. So we, we ordered a bunch of clear masks as well.
You mentioned face shields.
The end of face shields, yes.
He did. Okay, okay. I might have missed that.
Is there a, is that, sorry Courtney, I just, is there a like list of those things? And if there isn't, I haven't read it, I'm, I'm sorry.
We are putting together an inventory of everything because that has been asked. Because, um, we need to distribute it. So we're, we're trying to figure out a process for distributing, how to distribute all of the PPE to all of the buildings. So I'm, Kevin and I are going to be getting together tomorrow about that.
And those are district-wide, like protocols and supplies and things. It's not like a building is, uh, I mean, they may make, you know, they have to work with their own schedule. But like, you're providing from the district, all those supplies.
Yes, you know, and one of the things that I think will help, one of Courtney's comments from a community standpoint is, we had tentatively, uh, originally created a, a schedule where our, um, principals were going to have meetings with their, uh, community, with their school community about their parent handbooks where there would be an opportunity to explain a lot of those things. That got pushed back into next week. But, um, but I do think that, that it is a good point that some people are skeptical because they, they haven't seen the information yet. So, um, so I think that, uh, you know, I, I, I'm hoping that after they have that meeting at that local level, they can start to feel more comfortable about what's going to be in place at their school.
Well, and I would say it's not just the community and the students, it's the staff too.
Chris?
Sure, thank you. Um, so I have a different view. I don't, I don't support an all-remote start to the school year. What I'm hearing is, you know, not enough assurance to me that an in-person model would be, um, transitioned to. And I think it, it, it feels like a backdoor method of, of having me consent to all-remote for potentially the whole year or for a very long period of time. And that I don't support, really for three reasons. I think first, as I alluded to earlier, I think that our school district is an essential service for our families. And part of being an essential service is having an option for people to attend in-person if our local health officials deem it safe to do so, if and only if that's the case. Second, I think we are funded by and serve a community that does have various opinions, but that I believe a majority wants in-person learning. So I don't support a plan that doesn't reflect the will of what I think is a clear majority of our community. And last third, I feel very passionately about the concept of choice. And choice to me means an option for both in-person and remote for our families. So they can make a choice that is best for them in their personal situations. And so without more assurance and definition around exactly how are we going to hit creating this in-person model by September fourteenth, I don't support starting all-remote. Thank you.
So I just, um, I guess I have a one question. You mentioned at some point, um, about the health department putting out some metrics. Can you speak to that?
Yes, um, the health department, um, we thought was going to have, the Illinois Department of Public Health, we thought was going to have some metrics out to us last Wednesday. On Friday, we heard that it was, uh, on the governor's desk. I, I, I don't know what that means, sitting there waiting for something or whatever. And, um, as of my meeting on Monday, we were not, uh, able to get any assurances as to when we would actually see that document. Now, DuPage is trying to mirror and, and sort of work together with that state document to try to localize it a little bit. And we think there's a possibility we might get something as soon as tomorrow. But, but, you know, we hear those things and we don't know. So, um, as soon as that happens, uh, I, it would be my intent to add that to our decision criteria. And then that would be the threshold at which point we would say the organization, uh, can open or the organization has to move to a remote model based on the safety indicators. So, um, so I think it would be easier to have these conversations with people if we had that specific information that we could share. We just don't know when we're going to get it.
So thanks. So, um, I agree with the part of starting on September fourteenth. I think for families is, you know, this late in the game, people have made plans. It alters so many, uh, options to move the actual start of school to the fourteenth. That said, you know, I struggle with, if we aren't committed to figuring out how we get our kids in school, there's a huge impact. I mean, when you think about saying, our kids, like, when will they be back in school? What, we have to be committed to that. And I do, I totally understand that remote learning is most likely going to happen this year at some point due to the health, uh, metrics. And I think that having everyone have a slow gradual, you know, I can see the benefits of everyone starting remote. But I, I have a lot of concerns if we aren't really committed to trying to find ways to get kids in buildings. And maybe it looks totally different than how we're all thinking about it right now. And I'm okay with that. You know, there's a lot of different ways you can get kids in buildings and maybe it looks different than how school looked on March twelfth of last year. But I think that we really have to think about what it looks like if kids aren't back in these buildings and we aren't, you know, we have to be committed to that. So I agree that we should not push off the start of school. And I can see the benefit for both the community even to just, I mean, this is a really chaotic, I don't know, strange time. And, you know, we can start to move our community back, but the kids need to start having a routine and re-engage with school. But I really want to know often how, what work is being done to make sure we're working towards in-person of some kind. If you come back with some totally different, I, I mean, I, you know, I know there will be people who won't, you know, they want what it used to be. And, you know, we may not be able to do that this year. But something that gets our kids in school in some capacity is what I want to make sure we're committing to if we move forward in this way. That's what I have to say. Is there anybody else? Oh, yeah, Beth?
I just wanted to add one thing. I wholeheartedly agree that during this time when we can have kids in school and at any point that our, um, it's safe and our numbers are at a point, we're in phase four and we can safely have kids in the school. I think there's a lot of models out there where groups of kids are being brought in for various things. And I also would like to see some of those ideas and how we can gradually, until we can do it to the fullest extent possible, how we can gradually bring, bring groups in, whether that's for tutoring or it's clubs meeting, um, or it's for our, um, special ed population or transition, uh, kids, or if it's groups that need a little bit of extra help, um, in different areas. Whatever it is, there's a whole host of ideas out there. I would really like to hear about that as well and how we can, um, do some of those pieces. I also, I know that there's not as many sports happening this fall. But for the sports that are happening and for the things that we are able to do, I would just like to see a concerted effort to try to get as... I would just like to see a concerted effort to try to get as many kids involved in those things as possible. And we do have a lot of parents that are, you know, as Courtney said, that are willing to volunteer and help out in different ways. Maybe those are some areas that we can use that help to try to get as many kids involved as possible in these activities. So those are just some things that I would appreciate you guys thinking about and letting us know about as we go along.
Yeah, so sorry, I mean.
Sorry, sorry. I apologize for interrupting. Just on, so if we're doing all-remote school at all age groups, are we gonna be running extracurricular activities at the schools?
Right now, the IHSA is allowing for cross-country at the middle school, cross-country golf, swimming, and tennis at the high school. The Illinois Department of Public Health is supposedly going to be signing off on, on some of the specific implementation logistics. Again, that was supposed to happen, hasn't happened, I, you know. But, but there are, there is also talk of other things like say math team or, or things like that that could potentially be virtual, trying to find ways to offer some of those activities in a virtual type of mode. And so I think that we would be trying to encourage the connection with adults, the connection with peers, the connection with school, the connection with their passions to the greatest extent possible. I think that, to me, obviously if the governor were to have us all go remote or whatever there would be, we would be crossing safety thresholds. But from this particular standpoint, I think that the general consensus of, of the majority of the people are, is that we're not, we're not closing schools because we don't think it's safe to run school. We're, we're not opening on the 24th right now because we can't logistically staff it. So the, so, so I, I don't know if it's automatically, you know, a, a direct statement that we have to make that if we're remote, that automatically means everything else is, is, is off. Other people may disagree with that.
Okay. Anybody else? Oh, Karen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I started talking just to frame the conversation. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, highlight what, to me, is so important is I wanna recognize the two-thirds-plus staff that are committed to being in-person because that is the best for our students. It's, I mean, we have to listen to the people in place that are saying it's safe to do it. We have a unit district that's comparable to us, Wheaton District 200, that is executing our plan. They only have 20, 25 people that they have to replace or fill in or whatever you wanna call it. And so I really want, again, what's important here is the people who will, I can and I will, and uphold the profession and education and our students because we do have students that need to be in-person. And so I want, I, I can't thank them enough. So with that said, to me, we have to represent the best of education and all the people. And the community had a choice. And 85% said that they wanted to be in-person, even though these are scary times and these are the treasured loved ones, their kids. So that is a huge statement for me, that both our staff and our community is saying that, and all the Health Department is, is keeping, upholding that for us to allow us to move in that direction. So I'm with Cara, you know, saying that I can only agree if we are guaranteeing, committed, whatever you wanna call it, to phase in to in-person. So, so I know that you're saying September 14th, which I will call, I'm a technology person, a flash cut, where, you know, you go from one, the old system to the new system and everybody's doing it at the same time and everybody has to, you know, just happen right at one time. But I disagree with that, and I know that it's possible to phase people in. And so I think that we, we, you know, say for the reasons that we need to, we might be called on outside of our control and dictated or directed that we have to go into remote. And I do not wanna have a, not a practice run, 'cause it's not that, but I want people to be comfortable with what it means. That we have families that, to Chris's point, for the elementary, we have all the education experts saying 13 and below, they should be in-person, and we have everybody supporting that, and we have even the majority of our staff doing that, and so we need to move in that direction. I understand that it's short right now and we need to start school, but this is just temporary. Because the last piece I will say is we do recognize, we always recognize our staff that work tirelessly. But we also represent the parents who are overworked and overstretched, and we're asking a lot for, from them. That's why we need to commit to it. Even if we have to go to the state for help to get through the process, we do whatever it takes. This is where we are, people.
Yep. Okay, Margaret?
So one of the things that, you know, I hear as a takeaway, everyone recognizes that a remote start is not the ideal. This is not the idea that anybody wants to go through. I mean, it's, it's just, it's not, okay? And we are in a, a very unique circumstance. And we are, we are trying to deal with what we have been given and how to move forward on that. I wanna first, I wanna recognize our superintendent. I wanna recognize all the administration. I wanna recommend, recognize our staff. And I know, I know that each of you have worked extremely hard, entitledlessly, to plan for this constantly changing environment. And that's the one thing that's certain, it's constantly changing. So we're looking for certainty and we don't have it. How do we move forward? I also know the passion and commitment of our community to make sure we achieve excellence for our students. We all know it, we all have it, we all feel it, okay? That is recognized, too. Now, the question has been asked, what's the commitment? What is the, why would we believe this? Education is a calling. Education, the people who are in education are in here for a reason. They want to move forward, our students. With that basic fact in mind, I believe that if we all work together, I don't know what it's gonna look like. It might be very different than what we had imagined. But if we all work together, we will find a way for the betterment of our students and the safety of our community. Those are two key criteria. We have to work together. We have to move forward. We have to continue to believe and to trust each other, everybody involved. In my opinion, us moving forward on August 24th is a, a declaration of our willingness to trust that we can move forward together. Because I know it'll work. We all have worked with the education system and the teachers and administration in a variety of different ways. We know we wanna work together. We know we're all focused on the kids. Bottom line, we're focused on our children in our community. So to me, that's a commitment. That's the doing whatever it takes to get this moving forward. That's what that's all about. And I believe it's innate in our parents, in our community, in our administration, in our teachers, and all the staff in District 205. We just have to put aside and figure out how we move forward together. That's the call. That's the call.
So I guess I see three things. One, safety. Two, start date. And three, move to in-person. That's our strategy.
All right. So, uh, looks like we are keeping our original start date of August 24th. And there will be no calendar change. And unless I'm incorrect, it will be a remote start with the goal of getting in-person by, you know, hybrid, sorry. September 14th, if, if the metrics, health metrics allow, and staffing. Correct? Okay, so with that, we can move on to the net zero update. And before I move on, Bev? Will you be communicating that out officially?
I'm looking at a letter for tomorrow. Yes, ma'am.
I figured, but I thought I would double check. Okay, a net zero update?
So at the last board meeting, I was asked to investigate some other schools that have tried this and the extent to which they've had any success. And when you see the memo in your packet, you will see that it is very rare for any schools at this point in time to have embarked on a net zero project. I gave the examples that I had. I was asked to check with the architect, so we, I checked with Brad from White. And the examples that we were able to come up with, Sunset Ridge, Stevenson, and then there is a recreational facility that he alluded to. And then we have another school district that, that was not associated with White, but that Chris, through his network, was able to get some statements from them. And so what we found is that Stevenson and the Recreation Center, because, because in March, everybody shut down, it was difficult for them to have data that they could sort through to actually take a look at anything that, that, that would be meaningful, that they could interpret accurately. So that's kind of in limbo. Sunset Ridge gave up the idea because of the challenges of being able to achieve that. And the other school district also indicated that it is an extreme challenge to be able to meet those net zero metrics because of the challenges that you have to do to manage the project even once you build it. And so I have some comments in there from Todd about some of his thoughts on that. But essentially, we don't have very many examples that we could find. And the, the one or, or two of the schools that actually had some experience with trying to make a net zero project work were not very successful at all. And so, you know, we kind of are, are suggesting, as we had been, that we do not believe trying to design field to net zero is in the best interest of the district. It would come at a price tag of $2 million, and we would have to take that from other parts of the project because there would be no guarantees that we would, could recover that money even if we were to achieve some type of grant support to do so. So that's, that's what's contained in your memo, and that is a shared opinion of Chris and Todd and me. So I don't really know what else to, where else to go with that because I was asked to follow up, and that's the information that we were able to get.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
I, I have one. So our finance committee meetings for the last several months, or for the last several meetings have been attended by, enthusiastically attended by our constituents of the Elmhurst Cool Cities Coalition. And they, you know, have expressed their support and desire, you know, to pursue zero net energy buildings. And I had suggested, because so many of your memos say that you and your staff are working around the clock, I had hoped to take this off your plate by having that discussion with White and Company at a finance committee meeting, but you said no. So I appreciate your researching this. I just want your permission to direct the Cool Cities people to you and ask that you make this memo public so that they can read it.
Well, the memo is public. It's, it's in public view in the, in the docs.
Okay, so when they, well, we'll, we'll just direct them to you.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have anything?
I did. I think that, you know, the piece of information I wanted was just with what sort of frequency are subsidies obtained if you pursue these projects? The answer is not frequently. And so, you know, I'm not comfortable expending $2 million unless the likelihood of recovering that was, you know, 90% or higher or something like that. Not even close, and I'm not even willing to consider it if it's, you know, 50/50 or less, which is what it seems to be. So, you know, most important to me was that we gave it at least proper consideration because I think we, we had some good community members engage with us in a thoughtful way. I think we've investigated it, and I'm comfortable tabling it at this point. Thank you for the follow-up.
And I would like to clarify that I did say that a finance committee meeting was not something that we were recommending because we thought that it was a conversation that we could have at the full boards that we wouldn't have to add another meeting. Because yes, in fact, many of my people are actually working very hard.
All right. Are there any other comments on that? Chris, you're done? Anything else? Okay. All right, so let's move on. Any board communications? All right. Then we have two upcoming meetings. Tuesday, August 25th, 2020 is regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:00. And Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, Board of Education meeting at 7:00. And I believe that the Finance Committee will be meeting on September 9th.
September 9th.
Do you have the time? Is it, do you have the time for the?
We haven't made it yet.
Yeah, okay. September 9th, so we'll just leave it at that. Okay, with nothing else, then I will adjourn the meeting. It's 11:25. Good night.